I know there's gonna be some opposition to the Jasmine.
I wondered about that. I was explaining to, who was it I was talking to? Oh, it was Will. I was explaining to Will Vermillion for many, 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 many years. That was kind of sacred ground.
Yeah, we talked about that when we had the reason.
Way back in the olden days, a lot of commissioners, Golden Acres and kind of the who's who of the town lived in Golden Acres, and so that was sacred ground.
No, no, no.
And Little Road used to be something called Plaza Drive, which was the main road through Golden Acres.
Yeah, that was Evan, so.
So.
Yeah.
Never know, it's like.
We, uh, cause we talked about the.
Things come out of nowhere.
Don't screw with that.
The short ones are long and long.
Last case, that was the parcel just to the south of that.
But ultimately, I think the board, well, I think us and the board, I know I voted no on that one here. Because there was a dispute about C1 or C2.
Public hearing.
All of that, but ultimately, the board agreed.
Terms of the, the condition.
Put your baker candle.
Okay.
So I think the intent is that.
You know, when it comes on the front of the skin.
Willing to look at that, but I can tell you this.
Initials.
That Walgreens store. I've worked for Olympia Development Group where they built the Walgreens store.
It's an entertainment.
That Walgreens store has never performed.
No.
As pro forma, it has been a crap store, and it's on the list of.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they'll call me if we have to.
Yeah, I mean, you'd say with all the traffic.
It's not the same demographics.
Just a property, I understand you kind of get screwed by.
Griffin Park, the north is not the greatest demographics.
My prediction at term was that this M22, like Spire before it ever gets built.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, 52 and Melvin Brothers. Yeah. Now, what's it doing there? Is it that Amazon facility?
I think the guy that got the corner of Jasmine.
Yeah, it's a robotics.
Speculator, and that's what I think this one was gonna be too.
Although they have a binding.
At some point, the commissioners were talking about it, oh, you're gonna get all these jobs. Uh, just a bunch of machines running around, killing cars. Yeah, I don't know how much, I mean, I don't know how many jobs they're gonna use. Robotics, but I'm not sure, you know, if there are 100 jobs it creates or what, because it's a massive facility, so it's.
Right, right, yeah.
Three or four stories or something like that, so it's a massive, massive structure.
You gotta make sure everything's running smooth.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So there's always the human element too, they might have a bunch of robots run around.
Stuff on.
Right, yeah, it's like, how many, is that 100 people that's kind of in charge of them?
Sorry about the petition.
I just don't know. I did watch a video on that, it was kind of really interesting, they just showed one of the robotics facilities. You know, so the robots kind of go out and grab everything and bring it back, and there's still kind of the human element, but you're taking it, they're showing it.
Okay, okay.
At some of their facilities, that's kind of moving away from that now too, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Really cool stuff.
I know.
And if you just sort of, uh, close your eyes, like, no, that can't happen. Oh. Keep an eye on it. That is for sure.
Yeah.
When you do the continuances, will you do that?
Hey, buddy.
When you do the continuances.
I mean, be the guy or girl that fixes those.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, John.
Hey, David.
How are you? We brought you today.
Yeah, I saw that.
I don't know if the meeting will be long enough for him, but he got enough for a five-hour meeting there, I think. If you need him.
Unfortunately.
Patrick said that's not allowed, he's got.
Hey, I had three items on the agenda the other day, two of them continued as we still had a seven-hour meeting.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that was.
Take a little nap there.
They didn't even have any sausages.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Can I like to call the meeting to order? I'd like to welcome everybody today, if we'll stand for a moment of silence and the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk could do the roll call, please.
Mr. Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Mr. Chris Belfool.
Here.
Mr. John Mooney.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Muntz.
Mr. Derek Potlitz.
Here.
Mr. Richard Tonello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
I'm here. Thank you. And the proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on January 8th, 2025, and February 5th, 2025, by affidavit or certified mailings and site voting.
Okay. Get me any ministry approval?
No.
No, see me.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to, again, I'd like to welcome everybody today. Uh, we are the Plan Commission, we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings to transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, um, rezonings and conditional use requests. Plan Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be, may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Plan Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you not familiar with the format of our meetings, we have three segments. Where we may have continuances requested, consent items, or they'll be on the regular item agenda. It's been our custom to approve, uh, continuance requests unless there's extending circumstances. And consent items will go through one at a time. As we go through the consent items, if there's anything on consent that you'd like to have heard, uh, please feel free to raise your hand, and we'll pull it off consent and have it discussed when we discuss the regular items. And those are the items that will be fully vetted today, questions and answers. Applicants will have, uh, five minutes to, um, to make their presentation, and concerned citizens will have three minutes each to, uh, come up and state their concerns. And then, following the presentation, the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and answer any of those questions that were raised for members of the audience. If there's been a request at least 24 hours prior to this meeting in writing for extra time, that may have been granted, and in my recollection, I don't think there was. Mr. Devine, is that right?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, this is a good time for any of us who have phones, and it's probably everybody here. Uh, please put them on the silent position so they won't interrupt, uh, the meeting as we're moving through. And before we start the regular meeting, we're, we'd like to open the meeting for any public comment on any items that are not appearing on the agenda today. Uh, so if there's anyone here that wants to speak of something that's not on today's agenda, uh, this would be your time to do it. Is anybody here for that purpose? Okay. So, there being none, uh, I'd like for everybody, anybody who plans to give testimony today, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn.
Do you swear or perform a testimony you're about to give in truth to the God?
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Devine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll also note that we don't have anybody registered on WebEx to speak on any of the items.
Thank you very much.
Yep, to begin with, um, PC1, PDE, again, Liam Devine, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. PC1, PDE 25-7769, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Mirs4 LLC. The request is to continue the item to March 20th Planning Commission meeting in Newport-Ritchie at 1:30 PM.
Okay. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go through these individually this time, because there's some comments, I believe, on some of these.
I'm gonna be abstaining from voting on PC1 and PC2, because I'm providing services to those applicants.
Okay. So, you wanna approve these separately than our all ones?
He's abstaining from both, so you can still probably do them together.
Okay. All right, so then, let's go to the next one, PC2?
PC2, PDE 25-CU01, it's a conditional use request in the name of CNM Low Limited Partnership and Port Hudson Marina LLC, Old Dixie Highway Marina. This is coming a request to continue the item to the March 20th Planning Commission meeting in Newport-Ritchie at 1:30 PM.
That's, you said March 20th?
March 20th for that one, and for PC1 as well.
Okay. All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Mr. Chair, move to continue items PC1 and PC2 to March 20th in Newport-Ritchie.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we can jump out of order a little bit for P10. This one was advertised as a regular item, it's PDE 25-7845, a special exception, um, request in the name of BDI Properties US LLC, TLE Wells Road. Um, this is, um, was on your agenda, and staff is going to request that the item be continued to the March 6th meeting in Dade City at 1:30 PM.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anybody here to object?
I, I would just like to note on record, this item was previously presented once before at Planning Commission, there was an objector named Stephen Stanley. We have reached out to him, and he knows it would be continued today, and it'll be going to the March 6th meeting.
All right, great. Okay, have a motion?
So move. Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Okay.
The next item on the list is PC3, PDE 25-7848, it's a special exception in the name of 52 Properties LLC Tropical Board and RV Storage, SR52. It's for a freestanding RV and boat storage in I1 Light Industrial Park District. Um, it's located on the south side of State Road 52, approximately 340 feet east of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. This is coming with a request, um, for recommendation, actually, a request to approve the item with conditions as provided in your agenda packet.
All right. The applicant present? Anybody here to object? Okay. Next.
PC4, PDE 25-7855, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Gustavo A. and Angelina Trejo slash Land, Lando Lakes Retail. It's a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to C2 General Commercial District. It's on the north side of State Road 54, approximately 1,020 feet west of Wilson Road, containing approximately 1.59 acres. The recommendation is to, um, make a recommendation for approval with the voluntary deed restrictions as provided in your agenda packet.
Okay, and the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Liam, I got one question on that one.
Yep.
Is the, looks like this is only for rezoning of a part of the parcel, correct?
1.59 acres, I believe that is the whole parcel, it's right up on.
The reason I'm asking the question is, there's a survey included as an attachment to the agenda. The whole parcel is 7.35 acres. 5.42 acres of that is wetlands. If you go down to the background section, it says 1.93 acres, so I'm assuming the 1.93 is correct, but I just wanted clarification.
Sorry, yes, you are correct, there is, um, and maybe your zoning visuals will actually show it. Um, it is only a partial of the, it's just the frontage on State Road 54. The back half is actually conservation lands because it is a wetland. And I believe they just recently went through, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, through a comprehensive plan amendment to do so.
David, is it clear enough, the way it's written, because there's a conflict in the acreage, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want them to get stuck later.
Um, I believe so, I mean, is the applicant here that can speak to the conflict?
The applicant present? He raises his hand in the back. Can you come forward, please, for a second? Excuse me.
But just for the record, we are just rezoning the front portion 1.5.
It's the front.
Okay. Yes, if you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Hushkavahin Northside Engineering, 300 South Balter Road, Clearwater, I've been sworn in.
Okay. And, uh, so, you, can you give us the exact, uh, size of the property?
The, as, as it was described earlier, uh, the land encompasses, uh, upland closer to 54 and wetland in the back. So, I believe the front portion that's upland is 1.59 acres.
And what, and where did you, where did you say 1.91?
1.93 is in the background. And I believe, if you do the math, I think the 1.93 is correct. Because the survey that's included as Exhibit A, the legal description, shows the wetland in the back is 5.42 acres.
So I believe there might be some discrepancies from the background to write out petition, that's the general abbreviation, it says 1.93. And then in the subject line, it says 1.59. Um, I'm not really sure where that discrepancy is coming from. And then it also states in finding a fact, number one, I won't read it, but I'll read the sentence, the remainder acreage is 5.53. Um, so I believe there might be some confusion in the acreage, but we will double-check the actual survey, that will be just the front portion, that is not part of the conservation, and make those corrections.
Okay, yeah, I have no opposition, I just wanted to point, I just asked the question, get clarification for the applicant, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and is there anybody here to object? No. Okay.
So, that was PC4, moving on to PC5, I believe we have people registered to speak on that item, so that item will be pulled.
Okay.
Um, we also, for PC6, which is the companion rezoning to that, we have individuals registered to speak on that one, so that item will be pulled as well.
Okay.
PC7, you'll be sitting as the local planning agency. It's a comprehensive, uh, it's PC7, PDE 25-0070, it's a comprehensive plan amendment. CPA 2402, in the name of HCA Bayonet Point PD, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment of the future land use maps, 2-15 and Sheet 3, changing from ROR Retail Office Residential and Res6 Residential, six dwelling units per acres, to PD Plan Development on approximately 62.98 acres of real property located in the east and west side of 5A Road, at the southeast corner of the intersection of 5A Road and Hudson Avenue, and a tax amendment creating a subarea policy, Flu 7.1.83, HCA Bayonet Point PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map of 2-9, adding the subarea policy, 2-983, HCA Bayonet Point PD, where the recommendation is coming forward with that, that the local planning agency finds the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I've got a conflict on both PC7 and PC8, so if you wanna handle those separately.
Yeah. Okay, so that, the conflicts are noted on P67 and PC8.
So I will read PC8, PC8, PDE 25-7796, it's a zoning amendment in the name of HCA Bayonet Point MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, HCA Health Services of Florida Inc. A rezoning request from C1 Neighborhood Commercial, MF2 Multi-Family High Density Residential District, and MF, I mean, MPUD Master Plan Unit Development Zoning District, um, to a MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, to allow for the development of 600,000 square feet of hospital, 200,000 square feet of medical office, and 50,000 square feet of retail uses on approximately 62.98 acres in the West Market area. And this is coming with a recommendation approval with conditions as provided in your agenda packet.
All right, applicant is, applicant's present, anyone here to object? Okay.
For PC9, we have some housekeeping before I begin on that. Um, there was an additional ex parte between the applicant and ex parte communication with the applicant and Commissioner Starkey. I believe it has already been provided to the clerk's office, but I wanted to note it, because it was not provided in your agenda packet. Um, PC9, PDE 25-7813, a zoning amendment in the name of Anclot Townhome MPUD, Larnar Homes LLC. It's a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District and AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 190 townhomes, um, townhome dwelling, dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately 46.03 acres located in the southwestern Pasco County. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions as provided in your agenda packet.
Okay, applicant's present, anyone here to object? Okay, I guess we'll have to pull that one.
That was the last item on your consent agenda, P11 will be presented.
Okay. All right, do you have a motion to approve?
So I'll move continuance of PC3, I'm, I'm sorry, not continuance, I'll approve.
We're not there yet.
Approve the.
Okay, that's, that's okay, no problem.
Pro, uh, I'll move to, um, approve the consent agenda of PC3, PC4, um, and PC9.
No. No, PC9 is pulled.
No. I'm sorry, PC9 is being pulled.
PC7.
Yeah, PC7, or separate, yes.
I can't vote on 7 and 8.
Yeah, PC9 is not being pulled.
Yeah, it is, it is.
She raised her hand.
Last, okay, so, I'll move, um, approval of the consent agenda of PC3, PC4.
Second.
We got there eventually.
Okay, we do have a motion, finally, in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Okay, motion carries.
And we'll move to approve items PC7 and PC8 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion? It was noted that Chris, you, those are the ones you.
Yes, sir, yeah, I can vote on.
Use yourself from, okay. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those like sign? Okay.
We took action on the continuances, right?
We did.
Yes.
We have PC5, PC6, and PC9, and PC11.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to PC5, is that right?
True story.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the LPA, my name is Ed Zodi, and I'm with the Planning Services Department. The matter before you, if I can get it up here, is the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 2323 for the Little Road Amendment. This is a comprehensive plan amendment from Res1 Residential, one dwelling unit per gross acre, to PD Plan Development on approximately 7.83 acres, located about 495 feet north of the intersection, excuse me, of Jasmine Road and, Jasmine Boulevard and Little Road. And there is an accompanying MPUD as well. Just a few notes, this item is consistent with the development pattern in the area. The concept plan does demonstrate pedestrian connectivity, vehicle interconnects, as well as employment generating use. The plan specifically provides for the commercial to be located in the front, fronting on Little Road, with 23 townhomes that are maximum two stories in the rear. I can't operate this thing, there we go, excuse me. As you see, it is located in the Embassy District of the West Market area and inner urban service area. The West Market area is consistent with the concept, since it's providing mixed uses. The urban service area does permit more intense development, which is occurring here, and the Embassy District speaks to creating neighborhood. And the Embassy District speaks to creating neighborhoods with compelling spaces. In this case, if you've seen the site plan, the developer has proposed that there will be street scenes in the center lane between the two commercial buildings that the residents from the townhouses would attend. And that would provide for interactions. The context map is serving a couple of purposes in this case. Obviously demonstrates that the property fronts on Little Road, which is a 145-foot right away arterial road. The, um, the blue area that's on the map was just approved on December 10th by the Board of County Commissioners, changing its future land use to COM, which is consistent with the COM plan that it would front on an arterial. The new maps were just generated today, so they'll be substituted in the package. And there are sidewalks and trails, as you can see. Transportation network providing access, the, as I said, it's an arterial road. The existing flu is RES one. The proposed future land use is PD. And the zoning for this location currently is ER. Our position is that it is consistent with the COM plan, with the PD proposal. It does provide for the transitional land uses, the location for the commercial development on the arterial, as well as the West Market area. And we are recommending that the local planning agency find this consistent with the COM plan. And I'm delighted to answer any questions I can.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, it's really up to the planning commission, but you may want to consider opening the public hearing for the related MPUD, which is, I believe, PC six. If you're amenable to doing that, you probably need to get, let staff do the presentation on the MPUD as well before you take the applicant's comments and public comment.
Okay.
Or you can do two separate public hearings if you want, but, but it's really up to the planning.
Make solid data together.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. This is Robert Irving with the Planning Development and Economic Growth Department. All right, so the item before you today is the Little Road MPUD. It's PDE 25 seven seven two one. And here's the location map, generally located on the west side of the county within Commission District Four. And this proposal is a zoning amendment from ER State Residential District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the development of 23 townhome units and 32,452 square feet of commercial and 7.83 acres. This is located on the east side of Little Road, approximately 500 feet north of the intersection of Little Road and Jasmine Boulevard. So here's the location map. And you'll, you'll see to the north is the Learning Lodge Academy, a public K-38 charter school, and to the south is the four vacant parcels that recently approved, recently had the COM approved on the land use, as my colleague previously mentioned. And here's the zoning map. The existing zoning is ER State Residential. The existing zoning would allow for a total of eight dwelling units. The proposed 23 townhomes equates to a density of 2.94 dwelling units per acre, equating to a density increase of 1.94 dwelling units. The proposed land uses PD is presented prior to this. And here's a context map. And as my colleague mentioned, those four parcels directly south that are highlighted received a COM flu on 12/10/2024, and are currently seeking a rezoning to the C one Neighborhood General Commercial District. And directly across the street at the northwest corner of Little and Jasmine, there's an existing Walgreens with a C one zoning district. So here you'll see the master plan, and you'll see the 34,452 square feet of commercial located on the western portion with the 23 townhomes on the eastern portion. Just to note as well, the applicant will be required to construct a 265-foot northbound right turn lane at the project's access onto Little Road. And there will also be interconnects provided to the north and south as proposed. So here's the binding concept plan. So the binding concept plan shows the commercial buildings brought to the front of Little Road with the parking shielded behind the commercial development, with also on-street parking to the north and south of both of the buildings. They're broken down into 17,226 square feet per building with pedestrian access to the commercial development from the residential units. And the 23 townhomes are broken into three different typicals. Type one and three have one unit that is 30 feet in width and one that is 49 in width. And type three just switches these, just depending on which side. The second typical is for the three-unit product type with the, with 49-foot width for the eastern and westernmost units and 30 feet for the unit in the middle. The townhome units, townhome buildings will be limited to three units per building and shall not exceed two stories in height. Additionally, the applicant received round one comments prior to the issuance of PM 26. However, the applicant has agreed to the applicable standards of PM 26 and the conditions of approval. The applicant seeks a variation from LDC Section 901.6D11. Street design dedication, this is to not provide an interconnect to the east. PD is in agreement with this variation as it meets the intent of the code as there are existing single-family homes abutting the subject site to the east and make it not feasible for an interconnection to the east. And the applicant is providing interconnections to the north and south of the subject site. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions. Available if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just concerning that connection to the north with the school there. I'm just wondering if that's going to hinder the pickup and drop off? And just think about that maybe.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually walked out on the site, and there is an existing fence, so they would definitely have to coordinate with the Learning Academy and figure out how that would work.
Sorry, I see your hand, but we're not ready for you yet. Okay.
And I think the applicant may be able to speak to that better.
Okay, yeah, just, you know, because when, in the pickup lines, it gets long.
And so just. I know it's circulating.
Yeah, yeah. And if they have that connection there, it might, you know, mess things up with their circulation. So just to keep in mind. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I don't see anybody. The applicant present?
Thank you.
The applicant present?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Hoffman. I am here representing Advanced Engineering on behalf of the owner-client.
Michael, I'm, I'm sorry, we need your address as well.
10,009 Gallant Lane, Tampa, Florida. Three four, three three, six two five.
And you've been sworn. You've been sworn?
Yes, during the opening.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, now I had some charts. I don't know if those are available.
Who did you provide those to, just so we know?
Yeah, they were provided to our contact.
Mr. Chair, I believe we have them. We're just opening them up virtually.
All right. Thank you, Liam.
While we wait for the charts to come up, I guess I'll just proceed with some comments to accelerate the schedule. The, as may have already been stated, the proposed Little Road Mixed Use Development seeks a rezoning from a State Residential ER to a Master Plan Development MPUD and a comprehensive plan amendment from RES one to a PD to allow for mixed use development on 7.83 acres here in Pasco County. The surrounding vicinity has a current zoning of a State Residential to the north, east, and partial to the south, along with professional office to the south and a planned unit development to the west. The future land use in the vicinity consists of Residential one to the north, east, and southeast. Residential six to the west. The southwest corner was recently approved for a change to commercial here recently in December 2024. This, in our opinion, supports our request for the front portion of our proposal here to be commercial. And the reason I kind of wanted to wait for the slides, because the vision for this property, I think, is very compelling when you, when those slides come up.
Okay.
But I will proceed. The development consists of 34,452 square feet of commercial component that's on the front portion of the property and 23 residential units in a mix of triplex and duplex villas. The project commercial component is allowed up to 80% in a density of 5.27 dwelling units per gross acre. The property to the west, across the street, has a future land use designation of Residential six, which allows for six dwelling units per gross acre. And therefore, our proposed density of 5.27 DU's per acre is consistent with the surrounding area. Okay, so this is the first chart, and this kind of illustrates you're looking, looking east from Little Road. On the left, you see, on the left and the right, you see two commercial buildings. You, you come into the site, there's a center driveway that then takes you to the back portion, which is the residential portion. And you'll also see some charts illustrating circulation to the right and around in a counterclockwise manner. But this kind of illustrates the front entry of the property. Next chart, please. Okay? So I've already articulated showing the, the location of the property, the 7.83 acres, the existing zoning ER, and the future land use for RES one. And naturally, we're requesting, I've already articulated what we're requesting with the MPUD. Next chart, please. So, so this plan view, once again, you know, we have five triplex buildings and four duplex buildings, 23 total townhome villas, the 34,000 square feet. But the compelling part of this chart shows the circulation of the traffic, the parking behind the commercial buildings. And then as you enter into the residential area, there's a, a retention pond in the middle that will mitigate and be conform with all the stormwater management district requirements. There's going to be a landscape buffer all around the perimeter so that there's no concerns with, with the related residents. The, the, these are two-story villas. We initially started with three stories and we reduced them to two stories to address privacy concerns with adjacent properties. And so one, one other thought here is, our vision too, is that, for example, on a, on a weekend, you could, you could shut off the middle portion in the commercial area and have art festivals or other community events. But you could still retain the circulation around the outer perimeter of the commercial section for, for vehicles to circulate. Next chart, please. This is just another visual of that same type of entryway. You know, we, we feel that this live, eat, shop, play, reside concept, you know, to enhance more walking and community, I think is very beneficial for this area. Next chart, please. So this view is, now you're, you're standing in one corner of the residential area. Here again, to enhance the view, the, the different villas, there are two, two villa buildings and three villa buildings. So that helps accentuate the aesthetics of the front. There's also, some of them are side-loaded versus front-loaded. Once again, to add to the diversity of the front elevation views. In the center, you see the pond. And you see the sidewalk going around the entire perimeter. So we've done our very best to make this a very appealing project. Next chart, please. So this talks to the, the West Market area visions and mission statements. And if you think about what those vision and mission statements indicate, I think what we're proposing here is consistent with everything articulated in this policy FLU eight dot one dot one. Next chart, please. So this is some policies regarding the comprehensive plan. And here again, these, these different items here lend themselves to what is being proposed. Next chart, please. So this is just some additional views to give you different perspectives. Parking, the, the flow of, of the aisles, sidewalks, the elevation views, et cetera. Next chart, please. Just a few more views. So in closing, I think, I think what we're proposing here, I think, will add a lot of value to this community.
Okay.
Sir, did you want to address the question about the interconnect to the school?
What was the question?
Had any coordination? Mr. Tonello had asked you about, asked staff about the interconnect to the north to the existing school. And I think he wanted to know whether that had been coordinated in terms of their drop-off pickup?
What I can tell you is there's a dedicated right-hand turn lane into this property that should alleviate the traffic flow as you go into, as you're driving north along Little Road there. Have we done a specific coordination with that property? I, I can't say that.
He's not asking about the turn lanes off of Little. He's asking about the inter, your site plan is showing, and I realize you probably did it because the code requires, but you're showing an interconnect from your project to the north to the school. And I think Mr. Tonello's question is, is that going to interfere with the drop-off and pickup for the school?
I don't believe it is. I don't see how it would. Because the, the amount of traffic going in and out.
Have you had any discussions with the school about coordinating that interconnect?
I have not, but I can.
It'd be important. There's also the fact that they have to close the, you know, for security, we close the gates during the day. So that would be another issue, that we'd have to keep that closed. I mean, I'm all for interconnects. I think they're a great idea, but in some places they don't work. And I think in this case, if you, if you look at the aerial of this, you can see where they have the traffic flow with the air, with the arrows at the school.
Wouldn't they be, I mean, wouldn't they walk on the sidewalk? It's like literally next door.
Yeah, they'd walk, for sure. But if there's an interconnect, you know, like some parents don't want to wait in that long line. So they'll come into the apartment complex, they'll park over there somewhere. The kids will walk that don't live there. We've had this issue before at other places. Just want to prevent that.
So, so we're specifically talking about that pedestrian access?
No, there's, there's a vehicular interconnect.
Vehicular interconnect at the northwest corner, sir.
I think what that arrow was.
There you go.
Yeah, that's a good one. Right there, yeah.
So, so that was put in there because of typical, you know,
Right.
performance?
Yep.
So are you suggesting that we take that out?
I don't think Mr. Tonello was any suggesting you take it out. I think his question was, had you coordinated at all with the school to make sure it wasn't interfering with their drop-off and pickup?
I have not specifically coordinated that with the school, but I can do that. And see what their preference is operationally, and if we want to make a change there.
And I'll get with you too afterwards, and we can give her my email, and we can coordinate that too.
We know you probably only added it because the code required it, so.
Right.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
And honestly, when you think about the functionality, right? If you have some kids in this, in this residential area, do you really need a? do you really need a driveway through there? They're going to walk to school, or the parent's going to drop them off at a walk-through. So the purpose of that being an actual drive aisle, I believe, is unnecessary?
Well, the difficulty we have here is we don't, you didn't seek an all, I mean, you could have actually sought an all standard or variation to not do that interconnect, just like you did to the east. Part of your application said you weren't going to interconnect to the east. You apparently didn't do that to the north, so we don't.
I didn't realize it was going to be an issue, honestly. But if it's a concern, we can go back and see what their preference would be.
I guess we'll figure out if it's an issue.
During site plan, was that when it would be looked at?
Well, I mean, they, in theory, could seek a variation at the time of site plan approval. But the problem is, this is a binding concept plan. So that binding concept plan is showing that interconnect.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going to be problematic to then remove it at the time of site plan approval.
Okay.
So.
Unless it's addressed today.
Yeah.
I mean, in theory, the applicant could ask for an LDC variation, his LDC variation to include that, not interconnecting to the north too, but I haven't heard whether he wants to do that or not. Maybe we need to see what the public comment is first.
One alternative to keep flexibility, we could put a gate there. And if we decide that we want that to go away, we just close, lock the gate?
Well, let's listen to the public's comment, and then you can come back up and.
Couple questions for you, if I might. Have you looked at the flooding on the property?
So what we would do is, we're going to be designing to SWIFTMUD requirements, okay, that will address the retention of the water that comes on our property, and then properly treat it and dispose of it.
Has staff made you aware of the Timber Oaks Basin of Special Concern?
I'm aware to the north and to the east, there's a low-lying area, okay?
So this site lies in a basin, the county's designated this area as a basin of special concern. And the stormwater requirements are much more stringent than that required by the Water Management District. In fact, they more closely mirror the DOT's requirements. But I wanted to note out, note that in the memorandum, it indicates the sites located in Flood Zone X, which FEMA would say is not a flood zone. But if you look at the SWIFTMUD floodplain map viewer, SWIFTMUD has literally a third of this property, especially down in the northeast corner and up along Little Road designated as floodplain. So my concern here is, is that I don't want to exacerbate the flooding problems already experienced by the neighborhood. And I can tell you that the school next door's been flooded ever since the hurricane. There's still got water over there. So that would be a concern for me.
So my mitigation on that, and there is a, like you said, there is a small area to the northeast that is technically wetlands. We would have to mitigate that. But the idea with that center pond is to collect any runoff that occurs on our property so that it does not affect the adjacent properties.
I understand that. What I'm getting at is, I'm not sure you're aware of the extent of the floodplain on the property, because the FEMA maps are not necessarily accurate. That's the SWIFTMUD map. That big yellow splotch, that's your site. There's a substantive amount of floodplain, and there is a flooding problem in the area. And the county's recognized that particular stormwater basin as an area of concern. What I'm not seeing in your binding concept plan, and I, David, I bring this up in the discussion of binding concept plan, in that I'm not sure the amount of stormwater shown on that plan is going to be even remotely close enough to deal with the floodplain mitigation that's going to be required, and then the additional drainage requirement to meet the criteria for the basin of special concern. So we're going to end up with a concept plan that, or a final plan, that may not exactly resemble this quote "binding concept plan." And I expressed a similar concern when we had the Tall Timbers MPUD, the same thing, when we talked about the binding concept plan, and that I didn't think there was a likelihood that the plan was actually going to get developed like that due to the wetland issues on that project. And I had the same issue here.
I'm going to have to let Mr. Pito's or Mr. Engel address that issue. I mean, I don't know to what, there is a condition that allows some deviations from what's on the binding concept plan. I don't know if it's broad enough that if they needed to put a much bigger pond, for example, that took out all the townhomes. I don't know if that's enough of a deviation.
By way of example, in the northeast corner of the project, there's a substantive amount of mapped floodplain, which means they're going to have to elevate those structures up above the flood elevation, and they're going to be filled, and then they're going to have to mitigate for that flood, lost floodplain volume. And they're going to have to provide all the additional stormwater, so we're not going to end up with what we see on this plan. It's not something that I think is a slight variation. My concern is that it is a major variation. And I'm not sure how we deal with.
If it's enough of a deviation, I think the condition requires it to come back to the planning commission and board.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
I just don't know, you know, for example, if they lost two townhome units, if that's enough of a deviation that it would, that's something I'm going to have to refer to staff on to see whether that's enough of a deviation that it would.
I can tell you, just look at the stormwater pond for the Walgreens at the corner, the northwest corner at Jasmine and Little. And that'll give you an idea of the stormwater retention requirement just to deal with the Timber Oaks Basin of Special Concern, let alone.
I mean, I guess I'll ask staff, has staff looked at, or our stormwater department looked at whether this pond is as sufficient size to comply with basin of special concern standards? I mean, I see a condition that says, there is a condition 34 that says that if it's in a basin of special concern, that they shall comply with those standards.
Yeah, I understand that.
Whether this binding concept plan is sufficient to do that, I can't answer. That's a staff question.
But it doesn't sound like the applicant understood that that was an issue in this particular location.
I mean, well, I guess we could also ask the applicant, do you know whether this pond is adequate to comply with basin of special concern standards?
We would have to do more analysis to quantify and address Mr. Moody's concern.
If hypothetically, the pond was insufficient to comply with the standards, what would you remove from this plan?
To his point, we would have to increase the amount of retention area. And it may be that we lose one or two buildings in that corner and leave that unaltered. That could be a solution, right? Because now I'm not altering that part of.
Well, it might. It might, and I understand the issue here for me is that we have a quote "binding concept plan." So I'm concerned that we may not get what we're being presented.
So the condition, there's a condition that deals with the extent to which it's binding. It does allow staff to prove some deviations as long as the substantive intent of the plan is achieved. That's why I said I'm going to defer to staff. If they lost two townhomes, if that's enough of a deviation that it would require to come back to the planning commission and the board. This is one of those issues where the condition reads, basically, that staff gets to call it as they see it. So I'm going to let staff answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, Niktaros Pito's Planning Development Economic Growth.
Yes, Chair.
It would not be, the loss of two buildings would not necessarily force a substantial modification to the MPUD.
Terry, at what level would it force a substantial modification?
I think if they're changing the product type, and moving away from townhomes to, say, you know, recover the building type by putting apartments on there, theoretically, that would be considered a substantial modification.
Understood.
What if they lost some of the commercial? Would that be substantial?
I don't think so, because it would be a reduction in intensity.
What if they lost all of the commercial?
Then it would, because we're talking about the comprehensive plan. On the comprehensive plan side, it would be a plan development, which requires a mix of uses. So then we would be talking about a much bigger, bigger project review.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Moody?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
The only thing I want to caution the planning commission is you were shown some architectural rendering for this project. Those are not binding on the applicant. I want to be clear that you all understand that. What is binding, subject to the limitations we just talked about, is the binding concept plan, not the architectural elevation.
Got you. All right, thank you. And I'll have an opportunity to come back up and answer questions, so you might want to take some notes when they're going to come up to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do you have your list?
I do. Mr. Chair, the first person I have on the list is Alan Rose.
Alan, welcome. If you give your name and address, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport Bridge. I have a presentation for the committee.
You'd like to submit it?
Yes, sir. We'll be receiving file.
Before we do that brief vote on it, what exactly are you asking us to look at?
This is a petition to deny this rezoning.
A petition by who?
By Golden Acres Community and surrounding homeowners. I have 100 signatures.
Is that what you're submitting to us?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion, and that second, further discussion, all in favor, taking a vote by saying aye.
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 If you'd like to sign, thank you. All right, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, as a community, are objecting to the rezoning of parcel ID number 13-25-16-0040-0000015121. Currently zoned ER to new zoning MPUD with 34,452 square feet of commercial, plus 23 two-story townhomes. Every property abutting this property, abutting this parcel on the south side is part of Golden Acres, with strict land covenants. And all other properties abutting this property are all zoned ER. A developer is petitioning to rezone this to hide, I know it's MPUD, but it's still, that parcel, I consider it to be high-density commercial. The last one that was approved, that everybody noticed was approved, was reduced from C2 to C1. We don't have a problem with that going to C1. C2, there was a problem, and I was willing to go to the next step because we do have land covenants, and we can proceed with that after what I found out at the Board of County Commissioners. If we fail with this, and it proceeds on, it becomes a civil matter, and we have to sue. Now, my question is, do we sue the county for changing the zoning, or do we sue the developer? Anyway, that's beyond the point. Jasmine, from Lakeview West, three miles, there are zero high-density commercial properties, all residential, and one pharmacy. And that one's going to close. Little Road, from Grove Street to Star Trail, another three miles, there are zero high-density commercial properties. One doctor office serving the community, several residential and agricultural owners, a school, a veterinary, and a church. This developer is looking to bring death and carnage to our community, just like already exists on Little Road between Grove South to King Haley Boulevard. Just pull police records to see this. Most recently, two weeks ago, on a Thursday, two dead and multiple car accidents, all at the same time. But it happens regularly from Grove South. Grove North is nothing like that. You put a development like this in here, and you're going to bring a lot of carnage to our neighborhood. And you're going to also cause us to lose a lot of value in our properties. So just, I've submitted signatures. Property owners throughout the neighborhood wanted you to know, we strongly object to this. Also, what's not been mentioned, I know different water subjects have mentioned, this is also over an impaired water basin, similar to that. Go to DEP and find out what happens when a developer wants to develop over an impaired water basin. Then, he has not maintained this property well at all. Every week, we have kids riding their dirt bikes and different things, different usages. Everybody's playing at playground out there, but it's killing our gopher tortoises. There are shells for gopher tortoises you'll see, because they've been hit, because somebody has not maintained access to their property properly. And that's basically a motor speedway going on there regularly. So we went over the C2, that property that was rezoned is a C1. And that's a lot better than the C2. Had we gone C2, I would.
Sir, I want you to make sure you understand something. I'm looking at the conditions of approval for this MPUD, and it's only allowing C1 uses.
Okay, well.
Did you, were you aware of that, or no?
But the thing is, you see his buildings, that's like he says there's going to be no access to the east, to the back. Yet, I guarantee you, after he's settled in, you're going to see that access road go through to Hilltop. And they're going to dump in from Little Road and dump out on Hilltop. Not in this plan. I know he's agreed to certain stipulations. But I also know he's going to have that, and he's going to need that, because he's going to have real problem on Little Road. And that's what I have for you. We strongly object to this rezoning. And you, I'm going to lose, my property value, I'm going to go probably from $700,000 to $500,000. There are million-dollar homesteads right around this, abutting this property. You know what that's going to do to a million-dollar homestead? Now, he's got people looking, our homestead owners are going to have people looking in their back windows.
Sir, where's your home at?
I'm on Hilltop Drive, 10221. And I hear, I hear the motorsports conflicts going on over at his place all the time.
In your petition, you talk about high-density commercial. What's your perception of high-density commercial? What does that mean to you? We don't have a zoning category like that in the county. I understood you didn't seem to have an objection with C1 uses over C2 uses, but what do you mean by the high density?
The high density is going to bring a lot more commercial traffic into our community. When you do C1, it's going to be a milder version, and it's not going to be that dense. You do C2, and you're going to have a lot more traffic.
So your issue's the difference between C2 uses and C1 uses?
And I see the way he's developing this, that commercial part, is going to dump a dramatic amount of traffic into our neighborhood. And we don't have that. We already have too much traffic as it is. Our roads aren't built to handle this additional traffic that's going to happen. And the flooding you mentioned, it floods, it floods across.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Let me ask the question.
If this zoning were limited to C1 uses, the commercial part of it, would you be objecting to the commercial portion of this project?
From what I see right now, yes, because of his intentions.
Wait a minute, I'm confused, because you just said five minutes ago that if it was C1, you wouldn't object. So now you're saying you would object?
Yeah, that was the other property. And that's where we were, we've been good with that going to C1, from the C2.
So are you saying C1 wouldn't be acceptable on this one?
C1 would be acceptable, as long as it's not going to be dumping into our neighborhood.
But there's no proposal to connect to your neighborhood? And actually, weren't they asking for a variation not to have to connect?
Yeah, they're actually not, they're seeking to not connect to the east.
I understand that. And then, six months, three years after he's completed, who's going to come in and ask for a variance?
I mean, the same owner does own that easement that connects to Hilltop, but.
Yeah. Well, to be clear, if he's going to live by this binding concept plan, it's not showing any connection to the east.
Okay. And you'll also see, I've given you also a copy of the land covenants that are in there to our neighborhood, and just consider that.
Are you suggesting that this property is bound by your private de-restriction?
I have to really research that property a little bit more, a little bit further, but I do believe the connecting properties are all under that code. And this is what I learned on the last time, and this time.
So do you have the complete set of covenants for Golden Acres? And I'll tell you why I'm asking the question. So, do you have the complete set of covenants for Golden Acres? And I'll tell you why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
Many, many years ago, 20-plus years ago, I worked for the developer that did the Walgreens at the northwest corner of Jasmine and Little. And at the time, one of the issues were the covenants over Golden Acres. And to make a long story short, we ended up in a suit for quiet title to have the commercial deed restriction lifted. But these covenants would now be more than, David, more than 30 years old and have most likely expired.
Uh, no.
Unless they've been renewed. Do you know if they've been renewed?
Well, that's what it says. It says 35 years expires and then every 10 years thereafter, without objection, it renews.
Yeah, I think there's some requirements in a martyr that you do have to renew deed restrictions after a period of time. But I don't really want to be rendering legal opinions on the enforceability of a private deed restriction. I mean, they need to consult their own private attorney about whether those private deed restrictions are enforceable on this property or not. I'm just asking what he's asserting. Are you, are you asserting that this property, that's subject to this MPD, is restricted to something less intense under your private deed restrictions?
He's saying it's going to be C1. You're admitting C1. C1 as we stand, we should be acceptable, but it's going to be on that border. And you know, if we agree, if you agree and pass this, I'm going to request that you change Hilltop Drive to a one-way from Grove to Jasmine to keep that traffic out of my neighborhood.
You didn't answer his question. David, if I can answer the question.
Okay.
My recollection was that the covenants and restrictions enforced in the various units of Golden Acres restricted commercial, prohibited commercial development. I think that's the assertion he's trying to make. Now, whether they're enforceable or not, I have no idea.
Yeah, it also, it also prohibited-
Well, that would have came up in the last case we had too.
It also prohibited mobile homes. That's why they zoned it ER and not-
And that would have came up in the last case we heard in December of the four parcels to the south as well.
Yeah, I mean, as the planning commission, you know, zoning and private deed restrictions are two different things.
Understood.
So, is anything preventing you from zoning something in a way that may be inconsistent with the private deed restrictions? Like, I mean, it's a factory you could probably take into account, but I'm not even clear. That's why I asked the question. Are they asserting that it's inconsistent with the private deed restrictions or not?
Yes, and it's also inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood as we sit right now. It is not close to anything surrounding-
I'm not asking whether you think it's compatible. I'm asking whether you think it's a violation of your private deed restriction.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that's been a position of people living in Golden Acres.
I guess we'll let the applicant respond to that. We'll let the applicant respond to that assertion.
According to county commissioners with the legal team next to them, when I posed the last time, I went to the county commissioners and legal says if it's approved, it then becomes a civil matter and we have to pursue it.
I agree that it is a civil matter. I just want to know what your position is so we can have the applicant respond to it.
Yes.
Okay.
But for what it's worth regarding the portion that connects between this parcel and Hilltop Drive, it's not part of this application and it doesn't show on the binding concept plan.
Oh, so it's-
So, which is, again, it's a binding concept plan. So, that would be a substantial, if they wanted to interconnect, that would be a substantial modification, that binding concept plan.
They probably would do it without a problem after they're done.
Again, but they would have to go through this whole process again if they did that.
And I have to go through this whole process.
So, as of now, there's no connection that's been applied for that connects to Hilltop Drive.
Can I try to help you?
Sure.
So, I'm speaking to the zoning portion of this discussion. I'll probably ask the county attorney for some help in clarifying here. When we're looking at the zoning, we don't get to consider your allegations or your allegations regarding the developer's intent. If you can come up here and state facts and you can support those facts, we can take those facts into consideration in making a decision. But the law requires us to make the decision based on the facts. I can't make it on some speculation. So I'm going to ask you to, I know you're suspicious, but your suspicions aren't going to sway the decision we make.
Okay, understood. But the community as a whole does not want to see this happen. The surrounding neighboring properties, not one, want to see this happen. And you have the signatures to verify that. So he's bringing something to you that is in total disregard to the neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next person I have on the list is Robert Jerry.
My name is Robert Jarrell, 9231 Jasmine Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34654. My property is directly south of where this is going. What I am thoroughly and utterly concerned about here is that my property floods now. Okay? I talked to Swift Mud yesterday. My donkey's pasture, my horse's pasture is at 15.2 feet. I've lived there, I've lived in this community for 51 years. I've been in Golden Acres since 1999. I am extremely, extremely bothered by this plan. You're going to put two-story townhouses above my property, looking down. I paid $675,000 for this in 2007. Do you think, what you can figure out what my house is worth now, do you think this is going to hurt my house value? Nobody will want to buy my house with this community right next to me. I bought it specifically because I had another house in Tanglewood East at the corner of Tanglewood Drive in Sweet Bay. And I had miniature donkeys and horses and my animals were getting harassed. People were trying to feed them and trying to, so I bought this property so it limited the exposure of my animals. We rescue horses, we have a rescue, rehoming site for horses, and we have three miniature donkeys I've had for 24 years. And I am extremely bothered by this, as you guys can quite imagine. And my neighbors are all bothered by this. The people, the, I'm sorry, this is emotional for me because this is going to cost me and my neighbors dearly. It's going to diminish my value of my house. It's going to change my whole quality of life. And I'm going to tell you this right now. I spoke to the neighbors here today and almost all my neighbors that are abutting up to this property are going to have to sell, including myself, because I don't want to live next to this. I live in an agricultural community. That's why I have horses, that's why I have donkeys, that's why I have goats, that's why I have dogs, that's why I have cats. And we live there because I live in a park. I have hawks that come down. I have everything that you could want in a park. It's Golden Acres, guys. I've lived in this community for 51 years. I'm an active part of this community. And I'm not happy that this is even being considered because this is ER. We didn't buy, none of us bought this property thinking, oh, we're going to have a gigantic development next to us with two-story buildings looking down on my property. Nobody thought this. And I know you guys, listen, my dad worked for Pinellas County Zoning for 20 years. I know how hard it is for you guys to do what you're doing and we do appreciate it. But please, reach down deep and put yourself in our position. You guys got 100 signatures. When's the last time you got 100 signatures for anything? The whole neighborhood is objecting to this. I'm going to give you guys an example. The owner, the property owner, won't even block his property off. Right now, FWC has told me, two days ago, that they have a permit to remove the gopher, to mitigate the gopher, protect the gopher turtles, right? We're finding dead gopher turtles everywhere because they won't shut, they won't shut their property down. And it's, if you guys went out there, I implore you, go out to this property and look at it. There are six-foot ruts. People are taking four-wheel-drive trucks, everything you can imagine out there, and they're killing the turtles. There's 11 or 12 turtle holes out there that we know of. Please excuse me, I'm sorry, but I'm just, this is really, really frustrating for me.
Robert, your time has expired.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys.
Let's see if anybody has any questions for you. Robert, let's see if any, has any questions for you.
I'm sorry.
Anybody?
Can I just say, my property floods. My property floods now.
Where are you located on this area?
I'm on, I'm right, I'm directly south. I'm-
Right there.
9231. Yeah, that's me. See that? But do you see the corner, the left corner? That's my donkey's pasture that butts up against this property.
Right.
I will tell you guys right now, if you look at this map, you see where it comes out to Jasmine Boulevard? I've been there for 17 years. Seven occasions, it flooded so badly that the water went through Jasmine Boulevard and connected to the lake and pond on the other side of Jasmine. It was a flowing river. That's how bad the flooding is right now. During hurricane, usually we get the flooding late July, early January, late July and August. This year, we had it start then. It didn't even end until after the storms. I literally, and the only way I think that happened is, you guys were talking about the mitigation up in Timber Pines. I think they were pumping that and it brought down it.
Robert, you're way over your time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have to give other people time to speak.
I got it, I got it.
Can I just ask you one question?
Robert, we have one question.
Sir, I had a question for you, sir. I understand you're opposed to the project. I'm just going to ask you.
Sure.
Is there any amount of buffering that this project could put on the south side?
Sure, put up a 20-foot solid concrete block wall so I don't have to look at it, or 15-foot. You can think about the, just think about this right now. Just imagine this. I have a solid park. There's no light there. Think about the light pollution. Think about the 50 to 100 cars going in and out every day. Think about the two stories of people, 25 feet or whatever, looking into my property. That road that they're talking about that may happen, that's my property line. It's going to go right down my property line, guys. I mean-
You answer my question. If there's a 20-foot block wall, it would help.
I had a quick question too.
Yes, sir.
So, the flooding that you experienced, is it there on the west side of your property, kind of where the pasture is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, my neighbor and I both experienced flooding. This year, it was three and a half months of flooding.
Yep, so the-
It was 30 feet, by the way.
The mapper that we're looking at, which is a separate mapper for Swift Mud, shows that that area of concern that extends that Mr. Moody mentioned before.
Mr. Moody hit it off the head.
Yeah, that extends to that property, also extends to the south there through the west part of your property as well as your neighbors.
It's so bad, I have a four-foot agricultural fence, the whole bottom rusted out over the years. That's how bad it is.
But likely that flooding is just because that's a natural feature of the land. It's not necessarily because of your development.
Because it's 15.2 feet.
Yeah.
That's why. But think about this. When you build that, you're going to have to build up for the floodplain, correct?
Yeah.
It's going to get worse.
That's my concern too with the-
I'm sorry, guys. Please excuse me. I'm just emotional about this. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Robert. Okay.
Mr. Chair, the next person I have on the list is Tyler Sanders.
All right, Tyler, welcome.
Hi.
Give your name and address, Tyler.
Tyler Sanders, 10515 Hilltop Drive, Newport Ritchie. I have the property that's in the back northeast corner, right where he's, right there. So, I can reiterate, I understand, Mr. Moody, you want facts. My property flooded that whole back corner. Right now, I appreciate the developer. We went to the developer's meeting last year and he was adamant that this is going to enhance our values. Right now, my house sits up. It's literally on Hilltop. These properties on the back corner are going to be two stories. I appreciate they took it from three down to two. But that's still going to be looking in my backyard, my pool. Right now, I have nothing. Like I mentioned to the developer at the meeting we went to last year, if you were going to put seven one-acre houses back there, there's nothing we could say. We're all zoned AE, one acre minimum. This is to maximize his profit. I thought it was very rich for the developer to mention at the meeting last year that this is going to enhance our values. I see, I don't have the facts. I see no possible way how this will enhance our value. Right now, I hear the traffic from Little Road, which is bad enough. If you spend some time out there on any evening, you can hear the motorcycles going probably at least 80 to 100 on Little Road. What am I going to hear now with 23 more units, two cars per unit, plus the retail area? Totally changes the whole dynamics of why I bought that house six years ago. I bought that property, 2.7 acres, because it was AE. I've had goats, I've had pigs, I have chickens. It's a farmland. This totally substantially changes the whole dynamics for all these properties around it. I've mentioned to the developer, put one, put eight, seven, eight estate homes back here, nothing we can do. It is what it is. That's what it's zoned for today. To change that zoning substantially changes why we bought into this community. We see it everywhere around Pasco County. We don't want to see it in this particular neighborhood. Little Road is a mess as it is. It's just getting more and more traffic, more and more accidents. I hear them from my house all the time. Sirens, all hours of the night. It's already turning into a, into a planned development area with multiple, you know, we're adding houses to the left down Little Road, to the right on Little Road. They're adding houses. Nowhere are they adding a planned development with two and three structures, houses, townhomes. And again, I back up, my whole back property line is going to be right on the property of what he's proposing to do. Ron mentioned 20-foot wall. I don't think a 20-foot wall is going to alleviate my concern. Literally, they will be looking in because they're going to raise it up, they're going to be looking in my property. That flooded, I can show you on the map after the hurricanes where my, where the floodwater came from and how much it came up. That's all Cypresshead. I asked the developer, the engineer at the meeting about their flood mitigation and he assures us, they got to follow the laws and it's going to be all mitigated. It's still going to push water. The water from, and I understand they got to mitigate, may have to make the pond bigger if that's what you all deem necessary. It's still going to impact my property flooding, the way, just the way the natural features are of that land. And you look at where the water flows today and how it floods today, he can't mitigate the Cypresshead. It all floods in that whole back corner right now. So, you raise it up, it's going to go on my property. It has to go on my property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we have any questions?
Sir, I have one question for you. You mentioned that you attended the neighborhood meeting. How many of your neighbors were at the neighborhood meeting?
Probably about the same number that was here, maybe 15, 13, 15. I don't, I didn't really take account.
Okay, and was your general consensus that you all were opposed to this rezoning?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Staff needs to be prepared as to why this ended up on our consent agenda. I need to understand that. But not now. Just be prepared to address that issue. Go ahead. That was my only question, sir.
Okay, anybody else? If not, then thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Chair, the next person I have on the list, I don't know the last name, but first name Jeff.
I saw you back there waving your hand.
Yeah. Trevor Hill, it's 10447 Granning Lane. This is going to touch all of my property, all of it. And my son does go to that school. Every time it rains, I have a 2500 pickup truck. It's wet.
Where's your property?
It's 10447 Granning Lane. It's, uh-
Oh, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's wide there. It's long. And it's going to impact the whole thing. That water is going to come. I mean, it floods now. We go up there all the time. My sons and I, we walk out there, we do look at the turtles and things, whatever have you, but it's marshland. And that traffic, when I take my son to school in the morning at 8:20, it goes all the way up to Jasmine. The whole, I mean, up the whole side. Good luck getting in and out. He's going to put that road through. And when that road goes through, my boy's bedroom window is going to have car lights going through it because that's where it is. It's crazy.
Okay.
It's going to completely kill the value of my home. I saved for, you know, 15 years to get in Golden Acres. I left Largo, Florida. Call it a Largo ghetto because it was terrible. I came to Golden Acres to be safe. The people are going to be coming in and out of here. It's crazy. I'm going to, if this starts building, I'm not going to sleep for two years. Because when they were remodeling my son's school, it shook the walls of my house. It's going to destroy my property value. I can't afford to move anywhere else. I retired from Budweiser 25 years and I'm home now with my son and this is going to kill me. You know, he's 10 years old. Pardon me, but he's a boy. He wakes up in the morning, he goes out front, he sees a tree.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay? He can't do that when the lady's looking down from the balcony and sees him.
Yeah, appreciate that. Okay.
You know what I mean? But like I said, the school is going to be a huge issue because that water goes into that parking lot. I mean, it's just, every time it rains, not just every so often. And we have to pay, we have a rental pump pumping it out.
Yeah, I know. They've always had a flooding problem at that school.
So, I'm strongly opposed to it. It's going to crush me.
What we have on the screen right now is the floodplain map from Swift Mud.
The area you see there.
Yeah, that was the map that Commissioner Moody was referring to.
And then when they raise up that property and put those houses- And then when they raise up that property and put those houses in, it's gonna come into us. I'm right across from these guys here, and it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna kill, it's gonna kill me. I'm gonna, it's, I didn't move, so, you know, when they're emptying these dumpsters at 4 o'clock in the morning, from these restaurants, and, you know, whatever else they're gonna put in there, when do we sleep? You know, it's not right, it's a neighborhood. Put eight houses in there, make it part of Golden Acres, welcome some new people. This is gonna bring garbage, terrible. It's gonna completely deflate my property, and I'm gonna lose, and I will sell. I think we're all gonna sell, which is terrible.
Well, does anybody have any questions?
I don't think they can do enough to keep the water out of there. I do frequent over there, I have a 10-year-old boy, inquisitive, and we're always over there, and when it rains, it's wet. Very wet, so, good luck.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area pretty much. All right, great, thank you very much, Tony.
Mr. Chair, the next person on my list, and the last person on the list is Tammy White.
Welcome, Tammy, thank you.
Hey, Charlie, Derek, I'm Tammy White, and I live at 9320 Hilltop Drive. I moved there 34 years ago this April, when Little Road was two-lane, still covered in oak trees. Seen a lot of changes, and trying to keep our community the same and safe, and it's not. We've, I live on a lake, all that water that comes into our communities, everything all connects. I'm fortunate, I'm the highest property on my lake, but I nearly flooded a few years ago. My neighbors across the lake flooded. When they build these new communities, they raise them, same thing happened down on Anclot. They raise the properties, so all the older properties all around them, where does the water go? It goes to the older properties and they flood. We already have issues with traffic on Hilltop Drive. I live between Little and Yellow Lake, between my house, the two houses on either their side, and the house across the street. The majority of the wrecks that happen, happened on that corner. The added traffic is not gonna help. I still have to fix my fence from the last time somebody went through my fence. Three years ago, a woman went through my fence, took 60 feet out, and law enforcement didn't do anything about it. Like they mentioned, the traffic on Little Road, I can hear it from my house too, I hear the sirens all the time. Two people killed just a couple weeks ago. There's always wrecks on Little and Grove, and you're putting in all these new homes on Little, south of Massachusetts? We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have law enforcement that can ticket these people, that can watch out and keep people from speeding. When we're a victim, we're the one that has to prove things. People that run into our property and do property damage, they know what they can do to get away with it, and we're the ones that are stuck suffering. I was 60 years old, myself, three years ago, putting in, replacing a fence, 60 feet of fence and a gate, by myself, because I'm a widow now. That person destroyed a fence that my husband built to protect us, and now I have to keep the gates closed on my property because of what the through traffic is going through, and the people going through. You put the speed bumps in, yeah, there's a lot of people in our neighborhood that bitched and complained about it, but you know what, it stopped the through traffic, it saved our wildlife, and we had less wrecks on our road. I do appreciate the county putting in a new wildlife sign right by my driveway, I love it. But that's not gonna stop the people that go through our neighborhood, take out our property. I have to pick up trash every single day. One of my neighbors, at least once a month, he drives his four-wheeler from Yellow Lake to Hilltop Drive, cleaning up trash on either side of the road, so that our neighborhood that used to be pristine looks a little bit better. This isn't gonna be good for our neighborhood, it's really not.
Well, thank you very much, is anybody ask questions? Very good, thank you very much.
That was the last person on my list, but I don't know if you wanna ask if there's anybody else?
Anybody here that hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to speak? With something relevant that we haven't heard before? Have you been sworn?
Pastor Jane Kerewak, 15925 Bringley Lane, Springville, Florida. And just the thing that I would like to raise in response, I know Mr. Moody has requested that there's facts as it results to the comprehensive plan, and I'm looking at 303.7 application review, and based on the applicant's submission today, the conversation with regards to the changes that potentially would need to be made, it seems to me that potentially the applicant would need to go back to essentially the drawing board, based on they really didn't have complete information, and there was a lot of issues with regards to application that they submitted. So, based on 303.7, I would, seems that this application is not complete. In addition to that, with regards to building the properties up and the issues that the neighbors have kind of cited, we've seen that, I believe, everywhere in the county, and when I listened to the workshop meeting that was done this week, I believe, that was one of the main concerns that Commissioner Mariano Starkey and Oakley had. So, it seems as if this would be an issue that they discussed, and maybe this is not the good time for it. It's also not consistent with the neighboring area, thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Okay, would you like to come forward, please? Just please bring something new, if you don't mind? One at a time? State your name and address.
My name is Ashley Whitfath, 9815 Hilltop Drive.
Just one at a time?
So, I live on Golden Acres, I am a firm believer, 'cause I am a land developer myself, that if these residents did not want this being built, they should have bought the property. However, it is not zoned commercial at the time, so why do these residents have any concern that something like this would be built on that type of property? Everyone here today has said their concerns, very valid concerns. So, my concerns of living on Hilltop Drive is when you do switch the zoning, even with the changes that will make these residents happy with what you put on there, there is going to be an issue with Little Road. I believe on this type of property, you are required two exits. I believe they're asking for a revision, just to do one exit, so that doesn't hurt Hilltop Drive. However, this person that owns the property has that easement already. So, after this all gets developed and everyone is semi-happy with what happens, there's gonna be a problem. And when the property owner comes back, and you guys require them to fix this, the only option is for them to use that easement out to Hilltop Drive. And then Hilltop Drive becomes an even bigger issue, and affects way more people that are here today. We have a speeding issue, I believe Golden Acres is a bird sanctuary. I mean, a lot of animals get hit on that road, and we already have a traffic issue that we did try resolving with speed humps that were temporary, they got removed. So, I just believe if you give them a little on this property, once it gets developed after the fact, we're gonna have to do some more revisions on flooding, on the exit to Little Road. And what are you gonna do to help this property? You're gonna have to do more stuff, and then it's gonna be harder for us as residents to go back and say, "I told you not to do it." So, from the start, before it gets developed, that's why we have so many signatures. They foresee more stuff coming, and we're trying to get it stopped before there are any other problems.
All right, thank you, any questions? No, thank you very much. Okay, did you wanna speak? You have your name and address?
Hi, I'm Charlene Grant, 9804 Hilltop. That's my daughter, Ashley, so we have some of the same opinions.
Okay.
Mr. Gray, I believe your family has been here for a long time.
Long time.
As I have. I grew up in Pasco County. Little Road, it's a mess. Everybody's talked about the school. Right now, they have to do a wait back closer to Jasmine to go and pull into the school right now.
Right.
That has to be addressed before anything else is developed. I have a question, are the two properties, this one and the one that was previously done, C1? Are those people connected at all? I know it's two different names, just seems awfully convenient that this is happening.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, so...
I have a little bit of concern about that, because here they saw C1 got, that property got changed to C1. It is on the corner, commercial, yes, but we are worried about the traffic on Hilltop. Children, car accidents, wildlife, we say no.
Right.
Keep it residential, one acre parcels, please, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, yeah. Yeah, I'm very familiar with that area, I think my father built one of the first houses out there, and we helped develop it originally, when we divided up the land and sold a lot, most of that land. So, I'm very familiar with Golden Acres and the zoning that they put in place there, so...
Little Road didn't really exist at the time?
There wasn't a Little Road, there wasn't now.
Plaza Drive.
No, it was a, actually, Little Road was more like a dirt road from Massachusetts south to the river, and then north, it's, the pavement stopped at, right around where Tangawood East is, so... Yeah, it's been a lot, been a lot of changes, that's for sure. And because I lived in that, right in this particular vicinity for quite some, a number of years after I returned from the military, you know, I'm very familiar with how that whole area operates. So, you know, I think what we need to do, though, is follow the procedure and give the applicant an opportunity to come up and try to answer some of your concerns, and we'll listen to them, and then we'll take everything into account, and as a group, we'll make a decision. And appreciate everybody coming today, thank you, a lot of good, important things to say, and we appreciate you being here. So, the applicant would like to come back up, I hope you made some notes.
Thank you for the opportunity to try to address some of the concerns.
Excuse me, just a minute before you go anywhere, please don't embarrass yourself and say stuff like that, 'cause I didn't allow anybody to do that to you, so please don't do that, it doesn't help your case. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, just allow me a few seconds to process.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information here, and... So, one concern that I heard was, is there, is the owner to the south of this property a relative to the owner to the property in question? Is there a conspiracy here, et cetera? There is none, there's no relationship of the current owner to the owner to the south.
Okay.
So, let me put that one to bed.
Okay.
Number two, we heard concerns about a road that would be put to the east along a flag lot that the current owner owns, okay?
Do you know what we can put the aerial or the site plan back up so that when he's speaking?
Yeah, put the aerial up if you don't mind.
You know what he's talking about?
Yeah, and...
Yeah, see this?
This aerial, maybe one of my charts will show the plan.
That one shows the easement, yeah, you can see the easement there.
Well, it doesn't really, well, it's not a, okay, along that line to the, oh, it does show the flag.
Yeah, to the east.
That piece, go to the right with the cursor, from there to the right.
Go right a little bit more, there you go, click on that.
All the way to Hilltop.
We're all concerned that we're gonna put a road to the right there, and that road is gonna traverse along the rear of their properties. This owner is starting to approach some of the property owners and is willing to give that property to the adjacent owners, is considering that. He has no intention to put a road from there to the east. Furthermore, that strip of land is not wide enough to be a legal road with the...
How wide is that?
Like 25, 25 feet, there's not enough room to put in the requisite swales, et cetera. The owner has no interest, zero interest, in developing that road there. So, here, I want myth number two that I wanna dispel, okay? And he doesn't even care about, he's willing to give it to you guys.
Please, please address us up here.
So, I just wanna point that out. And thank you for the protocol. So, that was the cross-axis to the east, he has no intention of doing anything with that. We did do a traffic study, the owner paid for a traffic study to show the effect of these few townhomes in the relative area, in the grand scheme of things, it's not gonna affect. The one thing that did came out of the traffic study was we put in that right-hand turn lane so that you would not have a scenario of traffic...
I've asked you, in the audience, I've asked you politely to be quiet while somebody's speaking, like, just like I did when somebody else was up here. So, please observe the rules, I hate to have anybody taken out.
So, the owner's willing to put in that right-hand turn lane to make sure that traffic flows, egress, ingress, and egress. There was concern or debate about C1 versus C2. This is C1, this is not high-density commercial, as was alleged. The concern about the two-story duplex and the lady looking out onto the adjacent neighbor. A residential...
Excuse me, one second. I know the officer's trying to get control, there's a couple of people back here.
I'm going.
Probably best.
You already made a mess out of Little Road.
Glad you got your fame.
3,400 homes, that's gonna be about 12,000 extra cars on the road?
Let me just tell you in the audience that people that are courteous and still here, that type of action does not help your cause, no matter what you think. You know, it never pays to be rude, so... Go ahead.
So, one commentary was, you know, about a two-story structure looking into an adjacent property. If it stays the way it is, and somebody puts a house in these existing, breaks it up into existing parcels, you can still have two-story homes looking into an adjacent property. So, the argument that, oh, they're gonna have a two-story home and it's gonna invade my privacy, I believe doesn't hold water from that example. Furthermore, we do have plans for a pretty extensive buffer going around the entire perimeter and a fence. So, the concern that those neighbors are gonna interact with the farm animals or anything else or disturb the adjacent property owners, I don't think is legitimate because of the buffer that we're designing in.
What kind of a buffer are you talking about?
Landscape with a six-foot fence, I believe, whatever we put in the plans.
But you'll be able to see through it.
Pardon me?
You will be able to see through it.
Depends what type of fence. If it's a vinyl solid fence, you won't see through it. And on top of a buffer of trees and bushes.
Okay, did you have a question, Jamie?
That was going to be my question exactly, because I didn't see... I think if I'm correct, I think the memo only says you provide what the LENS Development Code requires, which I think in that case is a Type B buffer. Is that correct? So, you're not proposing anything above and beyond that?
That's what we're proposing. But as you can see from the visuals, I think it's going to be a pretty dense buffer.
Okay, but there's no commitment in here about the density of the buffer other than what the code requires.
So, fair statement. But that's no different than you put a regular residential home looking onto an adjacent property, right?
Yeah, it wasn't a statement, it was a question. So, that's... I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay, continue.
So, in any case, our intent is to have, to separate the privacy issue. And we, you know, we did have that meeting, whenever it was, about a year ago. And we listened to these concerns. And this developer has the intent to try to be neighborly about these things. The other thing is, I look at the wetland impact and I ask my staff member to shoot me a little picture of the wetland. And it's... The other map that Mr. Moody brought up, that's a different map. But the wetland impact is actually a very small... It just dips in one part and dips in the other by maybe 5% or 10% of the area, of the gross area.
That wasn't a concern, it was the floodplain.
I understand, I understand. Furthermore, we have the possibility, and I've done this before, to also use underground chambers to further... If, let's say, the pond that we were depicting was insufficient, we could also add underground chambers as stormwater retention under certain areas. So, there are methods to address the flooding concern and keep it within the property, okay? So... And I would argue that once we add these ponds and stuff, it actually is going to diminish what they're seeing right now because the runoff is running off from the current state of the grades and the way the water flows, where we're going to be managing that to keep it on the property. Let's see, let me pivot.
Since you didn't ask for extra time, I'm trying to give you as much time as I can to answer the questions, but I want to be...
Okay.
I don't want to keep everybody here too long.
Okay, I'm almost finished.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure I tried to address all the concerns. Yeah, and then the concern about the covenant, the Golden Acre covenants and those laws and regs, that's for that community. I'm not sure how that would spill over into our area. I don't believe that we're part of Golden Acres, so, just a comment there.
You don't believe you are, or you aren't?
I don't believe we are. I'd have to go confirm this, but I did not...
You are.
I don't know if I am or not.
Okay.
So, one other concern we heard was how that piece of property, right now, there are vagrants. There are people running all around there and so on and so forth. But, you know, just like any other piece of property anywhere, you know, people are going... So, that's the chaos you have right now, just because it's undeveloped, right? It's just a piece of land. Well, by us developing it under this condition, it is a controlled environment. And many of these thoughts that were voiced, that aspect would go away as well. So, in summary, I think there's a lot of consternation out there. But I think, as I demonstrated, a lot of it is ill-founded and a little hyperbole. It's my opinion.
This is Golden Acres.
Okay.
Factual opinion. So, with that said, thank you for your attention.
Yes.
Other questions?
You're welcome. Thank you. Any questions? From up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to ask this man a question? He's got his hand raised.
Sure.
What question would you like to ask?
Do you have anything to add to what you said, sir?
One thing, whether it's relevant or not, it's a fact. The Walgreens is...
Name and address.
Tyler Sanders, 10-515 Hilltop Drive. I just received a notification that they're closing, so that's going to be a vacant building. So, anyways, we were told at that meeting, and it's interesting how these things change. And I appreciate, you know, they were trying to alleviate our concerns of the privacy last year. Now, it's actually regressed. I was told last year, the wall between your property and adjacent properties, designers set eight feet. Is that solid wood or concrete? Will the trees also be placed? So, those are my questions I asked. The answer was, first I heard 30 feet, then I heard 50 feet. So, I don't really know what's going behind my property. And even though they've shown some drawings, they're like, well, we could, we're going to do some landscaping. What does that mean for me? We're going to have a wall. We're going to put up a fence. Well, it could be wood, it could be vinyl. It could be, can you see through that? And then the other comment that he mentioned was, well, yes, you could build a house back there and they could see you on my property. Absolutely. One family. As it stands right now, I have five families that'll be looking into my property. That's a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've heard all the details.
Just technically, first of all, I need staff to come up and address my question about how this ended up on our consent agenda. But technically, since you allowed the public to speak again, you're going to have to allow the applicant to rebut that again. That's the danger with you doing this.
Yep.
I'm just letting you know.
I'm not going to let anybody else, so...
I understand that, but every time you let the public speak again, you're going to have to let the applicant rebut.
Would the applicant like to rebut what was just said?
About the fence?
About the presentation at the meeting.
And I actually wanted to ask him about that anyway.
So, honestly, I don't recall us making a statement about a 30-foot fence, okay? I don't know where that came from.
Thirty feet distance off the property line.
No.
Charles Davis.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I don't specifically recall that.
Okay, you were at that meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will get with the owner and see if, you know, what he wants to do in regards to a fence.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, is what you would be able to commit to regarding buffering on this besides what's already in there, which is the Type B buffer that's required by code.
Okay, well, I think we have plenty of information here to make a decision.
Okay, I still would like staff to address my question.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning, Development, Economic Growth Department routinely puts its contact information in public notices. And if the public wants to understand a project, they can contact the department and also convey their opinions, their interests, so on and so forth, about the project. If they don't do that, we don't have a record of opposition to suggest to us to put it on the regular agenda versus the consent agenda. The project that was to the south of this property, the main concerns on that site had to deal with the intensity of the commercial use, to which we made sure that the property in the north would be consistent with what was being approved at the corner, which was C1. So, we had addressed that element of opposition that we had previously heard.
Terry, does the developer submit a summary of the neighborhood meeting?
It's traditionally yes, but it's not required.
Did they do that in this case?
Let me confer with staff, one second. Nothing was submitted, nothing was submitted to us regarding the neighborhood meeting.
Well, at some point, we may want to look at making that a mandatory requirement because I don't know how we... If 15 people showed up at this neighborhood meeting, expressed opposition, there should be some way for staff to know that all this opposite... I mean, it seems like there's a disconnect that you all have no way of knowing that there was all this opposition, even though they all showed up at the neighborhood meeting.
The neighborhood meeting is the developer's meeting. It's not a county function.
But it showed up on our consent agenda, which typically applies when there's no neighborhood opposition. And I understand you didn't know because nobody contacted you directly. But what I... The testimony was that the neighbors all showed up at the neighborhood meeting and expressed this opposition. If that report had been submitted, the summary of the neighborhood meeting had been submitted to staff, you would have known there was neighborhood opposition. So, I'm saying we may want to relook at that.
We'll take a look at that.
You actually, the staff actually gets a summary of the neighborhood meeting. Otherwise, how would you even know?
What went on?
The concerns that were raised, the fact that there was opposition. I mean, I understand that it's the developer's meeting, but it seems like staff has a right to know what occurred at it. Do you not disagree? I mean...
In the cases where it's required, yes. I agree with you. But we'll take a look at what the issue is with...
How do you know they actually... I'm not saying they didn't have a meeting. But how do you know they actually had the meeting if you don't have some kind of minutes or...
Is staff notified of the meetings?
Yeah, so, in this case, neighborhood meeting isn't required... What, hold on. One million planning, development, economic growth. Neighborhood meeting is required in the rural areas and in villages passing hills, in which case it wasn't required. But in the instance that it is required, it is submitted to staff as a requirement of the LDC. Those meeting notes.
So, you're saying for this project, it was not required, but they conducted one anyway?
Correct.
Did they do that on their own, or did staff request them to do it, or...
They did it on their own. That's why we had no record of it.
I see, okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, David?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay.
I got a question for staff. In relation to this parcel, and I've heard several references to commercial on the frontage being similar to the commercial that was done to the south. Is that correct? In the C1.
That is correct, C1.
But it looks like on the master plan that they go another couple hundred feet further back into the parcel. So, they're not just commercial adjacent to the... Commercial to the south. They're also adjacent to what remained as a state residential or ER. Is that correct? Who did I...
Yeah, it looks like to some extent.
That's my biggest concern. I guess where I'm getting going with that is, I think the argument was made before, and the argument's always on commercial, that it's the proximity to the road in the front. But what's the acceptable depth? I mean, could they come in and ask for 600 feet of depth of commercial? And it looks like to the south, they really only got 250 or 300 feet of commercial. So, from where I'm sitting, it almost looks like if... They can make that argument to be compatible with the commercial to the south if they are only that depth, which is 250, 260 feet. But they're asking for much more. Am I reading that correctly?
We're confirming at the moment.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
You have a question for the developer on that?
No.
You have to be called up, and we don't have a question for you, so...
I was just looking at the master plan, and it looks like those parcel lines, it looks like it goes much deeper than just the two parcels to the south.
Showed 662 from the rear property line to the rear of the commercial building.
Substantially a lot deeper, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't reading the master plan incorrectly. Terry, if you guys just look at the master plan, I mean, it looks like there's three parcels to the south.
Yes, it's three parcels to the south.
Okay, I mean, personally, I have a concern with that and the compatibility there between that, what remains as a state residential and that depth of that commercial. And then also, my other thing, and I really, I have not heard any compelling argument as far as how multifamily townhomes, duplexes, triplexes are compatible with the estate residential that's going to remain all the way around it. I mean, I can see and I can understand that the commercial frontage for... or the commercial argument for the frontage, right immediately adjacent to Little Road. But going beyond what they got to the south for the commercial and then that multifamily residential townhomes wedged in between, I mean, we've already heard that there's drainage concerns, floodplain concerns. I mean, a lot of that stuff's going to be taken care of in the permitting. I mean, they're going to, they're going to base this special concern. They're going to be held to those standards, all that stuff. But a compatibility issue, I just don't see how those townhomes are compatible with the estate residential all the way around it.
In terms of the... The depth of the commercial property, what we're looking at by the third parcel is the parking lot area of the proposed development. That's what would be aligned with that third parcel, which, if you compare it, you look due north, the non-residential use to the north also has a similar depth. So, that would be the depth comparison along Little Road.
So, you're saying at the back of the parking lot of that school?
Correct.
The eastern boundary of that parking lot?
Right. And then in terms of the land use selection, in terms of townhomes, this is nonetheless the urban concentration area along a major arterial roadway such as Little Road. And it's a typical transition to move from higher intensity land use, like commercial, even at C1, and step it down to single-family detached, which is the ER zoning district. And the density level only increases by 1.9 dwelling units per gross acre, given the quantity of townhomes on the site, it's 23. So, the density increase is not out of scale with surrounding one dwelling unit per gross acre.
You have a question?
No, yeah, I agree with some of the concerns. See, Mr. Moody brought up, you know, the concern about the floodplain, even though this is all upland area. You know, I have some concerns that that really wasn't looked at in terms of how that might affect the properties to the south. And, you know, if there's any fill that's brought in to build up these townhomes and there's any kind of, I guess, any way that that's cutting off the flow to the south and changing the flow of water that's naturally occurring there, that could present an issue to the adjoining properties. I also am concerned, too, that the applicant didn't seem to really address the concerns of the neighborhood that well prior to this. It seems like there was a neighborhood meeting that happened, but there wasn't many concerns that were really addressed. I, you know, I wasn't... I guess we heard a little bit about buffering, but there wasn't a whole lot that was said about specifics to that buffering. I feel like that some of the people that had some concerns might have some... Might be a little bit better feeling about those concerns if some of the buffering was more specific. So, that's kind of where I'm at on this whole thing. I think in general, the plan makes sense to have commercial in the front and some residential in the rear. I mean, it's, you know, yes, this is not the Golden Acres of old and Little Road's a busy road, so a commercial makes sense there adjacent to Little. But so, the overall idea. But just the execution of this, I have some concerns about.
Well, in the interest of time and for purposes of discussion, I'd like to hear a motion to deny. I'd like to make a motion to deny.
I'll make the motion to deny the comprehensive plan amendment, which then, I guess, would... David, if I do that, then does that automatically nullify the zoning, or...
Basically.
Okay.
The zoning can't be approved without the complaint amendment. And I would also argue to you that you have, you and the board, a far more discretion to deny a complaint amendment, it's a legislative decision. So, you don't really need to get into the zoning criteria or any... you don't really need to get into the zoning criteria or any of the other reasons. I mean, you can state your reasons for denial if you want to, but really, any rational basis would suffice to deny a plan amendment.
So, I, I move to deny item PC5, which is...
You're seconding, right?
I had made the motion.
Yeah, you can make the motion.
CPass 2323.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion of the motion?
Just a question, as far as if it is denied, the board denies that the applicant could come back at a later date and maybe propose something different?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
However, there is, there are rules on if the board takes formal action to deny it. I think there's a year, am I saying that right, Terry? That I think there's a year you have to wait before you can reapply for the same.
Before the same, yes.
Yes.
If they wanted to apply for something different.
If it's something completely different, I would think that probably doesn't apply.
Right. So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? All right, so the application is denied.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have a clarification question. Liam Devine, Planning Development Economic Growth. David, are you saying there does not need to be an action on PC6?
If, if, if the planning commission is saying that the plan amendment should be denied, they simply can't recommend approval of the zoning. The zoning would be inconsistent with the existing complaint, so... I mean, if you want, if you, if it's staff's, I guess I'll ask staff. Do you want a formal recommendation of denial on the zoning too? As being inconsistent with the complaint, we can have them take that action.
How would you, in a due process perspective, we can advance the comprehensive plan with the recommendation from the LPA. The MPUD stays behind?
Well, are you, I guess I'll, staff, if the planning commission recommends denial of the plan, you intend to still move forward with the recommendation of approval?
Can I make a suggestion? Would it be appropriate to continue it to a date uncertain and see how the comprehensive plan plays out with the board? And then they can always bring it back to Planning Commission for a vote?
I, I, personally, I, I wouldn't prefer that. I'd like to get it decided today.
So I think just in a balance of caution, let's go to make a motion.
I'll, I'll move to deny, recommend denial of item PC6, the companion rezoning based on it being inconsistent with our recommendation of denial for the comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll second. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Does that answer your question, Liam? Okay.
Makes his job easier.
Okay, so for those of you who are here for this particular item, that request has been denied, so.
However, I want to be clear, that doesn't stop the applicant from moving, trying to move forward to the Board of County Council.
That's the next step, so. Okay. Appreciate everybody being here. Except for a couple of the guys.
We probably have left.
Yeah.
Mr. Terry, I believe our next item on the list is PC9.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
My friggin' pen exploded.
Okay.
I can just cut some jokes and see what he wants you to go to talk about. It's a little different because it's not going to be permanent.
Right.
Staff doesn't want to take, you understand why staff, they don't want to take the position out, they know it's there now, they don't want to say, oh, the board of county is only within condition, they don't want to say, oh.
I mean, all those townhomes, make those houses.
I don't know, I'm gonna have to, because I've never heard of that particular set of facts. Normally what we're doing is a restriction on use. Or it's a restricted part, it's a code requirement that the code would have required anyway, and so it's academic. We never had a situation where the code doesn't require it and doesn't go to use.
Take the whole commercial issue off the case.
So I'll discuss it with him.
All right. Okay, call me in order. All right. Name? It's all set.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Presented before you today is the Anclot Town Homes Master Plan Unit Development. My name is Jacob Gates, I'm with the Planning Development Economic Growth Department, Planning Services Division. I am PC nine, Anclot Town Homes Master Plan Unit Development District. Next slide. Proposal zoning amendment from the AC Agricultural Zowing District, AR Agricultural Residential Zowing District, to the MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District. The future land use is RES six, there is no accompanying comprehensive plan amendment for this MPUD. Purpose is to allow maximum up to 190 townhome dwelling units on 46.03 acres. It's located on the far southwestern corner of Pasco County, just east of Anclot High School, and just north of Paul R. Smith Middle School. Next slide, please. You can see the red and yellow star on the bottom left-hand corner. This is a context map. I've gone ahead and highlighted each of the surrounding MPUDs. Boca Vista to the northwest, Key Vista to the north, Anclot River Resort to the west, and Dominion Anclot MPUD directly to the south. You can see Anclot High School, Anclot Middle School, and the main drive to each of those schools. This is a location map. The current zoning district, the two smaller parcels on the left are AR, and the larger parcel is AC. Part of the MPUD would carve out part of the larger parcel to create the MPUD. You'll see that illustrated later. Current future land use is RES six, again, no amendments proposed. This is the master plan. This is the binding concept plan for the project. As you can see, the vast majority of the area is going to be undeveloped and retained for wetland mitigation, stormwater mitigation, and the vast majority of development will happen on the far western side. To the south is Bluffs at Gulfside, which is expired. Dominion Anclot MPUD, which is 228 multifamily dwelling units, it's currently being built. Paul R. Smith Middle School and single-family residential development. To the north is mainly a Duke Energy easement. Undeveloped land, single-family development. To the west is a communication tower with guy wires, that's why it has the carve-out shape. You see a water canal, as well as single-family residential development. And to the east is Anclot High School and the Anclot River Resort MPUD, which is 350 RV spaces, 2,500 square feet for lodge, a discovery center accessory uses, currently unbuilt. And our recommendation is to recommend approval with conditions to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Initial questions?
You might have some school questions.
Comment, comment, not a question. Just don't FYI, because there's, I'm looking at that where it's right abutting the soccer field and the football field, so those residents will have access, you know, there's going to be the band playing and all that stuff, so then when they know, before they buy that, there'll be some noise.
Yes. I think they would definitely be aware, and I'm sure the developer will disclose.
Yeah.
One point of order, if you look on the agenda memo for this item, and the finding of facts, finding of fact number four, it's referencing the hurricane vulnerability zone condition. It says, see COA number 57. It's actually COA number 59. Just a bit of housekeeping.
Okay. While we're on housekeeping, for this item, Mr. Moody brought something to our attention today, thank you, Mr. Moody, that there is a prior special exception associated with the tower, and one of the conditions of that prior special exception did require some unused area to be reforested. Now, we're not sure whether the area that was required to be reforested affects this MPUD or not, but we probably are going to need to add a condition that makes it clear that to the extent that it did, that this MPUD superseded that requirement. So, that condition is not in your packet today, but it will, it's something we need to work on with the applicant, because we're still trying to get a copy of the required forestry plan to see if it even impacted the developable area of this MPUD, it may not, but if it did, we need to address it through a condition.
Definitely. One quirk of that condition from 2008, initially proposed in 1994, the year after I was born, was that they had to register it with the ag office, with the state, but not, but not with us. So, it means that we aren't finding it in our paper records, we may have to do a request to the state to receive the forestry report. Just letting you guys know, full transparency.
But even if we don't find it, there's a way to draft a condition that basically has this MPUD supersede that requirement, if it applies?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? From the staff? I guess you got lucky.
Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn here on behalf of the applicant. As staff point out, Patty, maybe we can go to our staff, you saw the concept plan that's in there, you can go maybe to the next page. The site is immediately north of the Dominion site that you all saw about, I think, 18 months ago, 18, 24 months ago. And in that approval, the county approved a future lane use change to RES 24 for the site immediately south of us, and has 228, that's affordable units, immediately south of us. And the Dominion project is building what's going to be a shared access drive with our project, if you can go to the next slide there, Patty. You can see Shoreline Escape Lane is where we're sharing access, and that will include an eight-foot, eight-foot multi-use path on the north side, they will have a sidewalk on their side, so our kids will be able to go right to our multi-use path and walk right out to the high school to the north, or take the sidewalk then to the south to the middle school. So that's all really good. The area generally has a lot of RES six in it, and then on the other side to the east in Holiday Lake Estates, that portion on the east side of the canal is RES nine. So what we're proposing with townhouses here is really in keeping not only with the planned RES six that we have, but it's significantly lower than other areas, and the density we're proposing is roughly, it's under 50% of the density of the Dominion project immediately to our south. We feel like we've got a great plan. We are planning significantly more open space in our plan that you see there. There's a dog park up in the northeast corner, northwest corner, and then we have a big amenity center, which you don't always see on a smaller townhome-only project, and my credit is to Lenore and the project manager, Brian Panico, with really laying out what I think's going to be a nice project for our residents, but it's also offering an enhanced amenity from what you would normally see. So I think, you know, I've got my team here, we've got a couple of residents that want to ask questions, I think that are primarily related to stormwater and to traffic, and I've got Steve Henry here to answer the traffic, so if it's okay with you all, I'll reserve the balance of my time until we hear from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you okay with coming up?
Yes.
Well, my name is George Megalutus. I live at 3539 Emery Drive, Holiday Lake Estates. The concern that we have, that I have, is the traffic. And being that our sheriff's department in Pasco County is very limited to their use of traffic control, we don't think that the amount of homes going into that area with the three schools that are there, you've got a high school, middle school, and an elementary school, and they need to either enhance the traffic situation, or create safety zones for the two-mile radius children that walk to school on Holiday Drive, not so many on Anclot Road, but mainly on Holiday, Holiday Lake Drive. Traffic's gonna, you have 20 buses per school, three schools, there's 60 buses one way and 60 buses coming out the other way for the total day. So plus you have foot traffic, and you have parents that live in the subdivision that drop their kids off in the morning before they go to work. So traffic is the main, the main issue to this. You have, if you have an average of two vehicles per, per unit, you're talking a lot of vehicles. So that's the main concern.
All right.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello.
All right.
Hi. Don't be scared.
I'm Tanya Malmstrom, 2027 Essex Drive. And I agree with what George is saying, but also with the traffic coming from back, it takes you up to alternate 19, and that's already backed up at least a couple times a day, especially in the wintertime. So you can't even get out of the subdivision to turn left to continue out to US 19, and that's probably a good mile, maybe a mile and a quarter. And also, we were talking about flooding, because now they're going to be elevated, I think, what is it, nine feet? So then the water is being dispersed out, because I'm right by, within a half a mile of where they're going to be building. And I know they're going to do retention ponds, but how much do those hold? And they will sometimes overflow. And the other thing is, because we've got three, four beautiful parks back there at Anclot, it would be great to have that property stay agriculture, and maybe the county could buy it, because as the motto says, where Pasco is, open spaces, vibrant places. And we keep building and building right there, and we're losing our open spaces. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Did very well. Anyone else? You got your traffic man handy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn this over to Steve to talk about the traffic in just a minute, but I just wanted to point out for our neighbors, because I was speaking to them before, that the area of the site that we're proposing to build on is all in flood zone X. There is an area over where the cell tower is and the wetland that's going over to the east that's in A, we're not proposing to build in that area. And obviously, we're going to apply with all the county and SWIFTMUD rules on, on that stuff, so I'm really not worried about flooding on what we're building there. But I think, really, I want to have Steve talk about the traffic.
Clark, before you turn it over to Steve, just by way of clarification, is that tower, a cell tower, or is it a radio tower, or both?
Is it a what?
The tower, is it?
It's a communication tower, it's not a cell tower.
It's the Channel 10 antenna.
Does it have cell service on it, or what I mean, two, or is it just?
They're saying yes, I don't know, David. I haven't looked at the panels on the tower, I don't know.
I was just curious if it was, if it was only a radio tower, less and less people are listening to the radio, and it may come down at some point. If it's got television and cell service, it's probably not coming down anytime soon.
Right. Yeah, I honestly do not know about that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you can't speak from the onyx, because we can't get it on the.
If he knows the answer to my question, maybe we can bring him up.
Why don't you just come up and, come up and speak into the microphone? Because if you say something wrong, then we can really come after you, see?
I didn't know you were the expert on towers.
It is a Channel 10 tower, for a Channel 10 in Tampa, also a cell tower, and also a radio tower for, I believe it's 104.7.
Okay, you answered my question.
There's three different things, uses of it, and it's a very, very, very good lightning conductor. Lights up in the after, it lights up at night when there's lightning.
You always get a show.
Oh, my God. And you wonder.
And for the record, your name is?
George Megalutus.
You got that, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, George.
Okay.
Thank you for the helpful information.
Lightning rod.
Good afternoon, Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607, and I have been sworn. So just real quick on the traffic, one of the things we did on this one, because of the schools, we actually did longer counts, so we did counts from 6:00 AM to 9:00, and then we also did them from 1:00 in the afternoon to 6:00, just to make sure we've captured all the school hours in there. But we looked at that volume, we added a growth rate to it, in addition to that, we added the Dominion project to that. And when we looked at the analysis, you know, the driveway works at acceptable level of service, the volumes are reasonable out there to allow it to operate within, actually, it's level of service A or C for the different movements within the intersection.
So you did allow for the proposed Dominion project?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay. That was going to be my question.
Yes.
The proposed density is what I meant to say.
Do you have any questions?
We are planning significantly more open space in our plan that you see there. There's a dog park up in the northeast corner, northwest corner. And then we have a big amenity center, which you don't always see on a smaller townhome-only project. And my credit is to Lenore and the project manager, Brian Panico, with really laying out what I think's going to be a nice project for our residents. But it's also offering an enhanced amenity from what you would normally see. So I think, you know, I've got my team here. We've got a couple of residents that want to ask questions, I think, that are primarily related to stormwater and to traffic. And I've got Steve Henry here to answer the traffic. So if it's okay with you all, I'll reserve the balance of my time until we hear from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are you okay with coming up?
Yes.
Well, my name is George Megalutus. I live at thirty-five, thirty-nine Emery Drive, Holiday Lake Estates. The concern that we have, that I have, is the traffic. And being that our sheriff's department in Pasco County is very limited to their use of traffic control, we don't think that the amount of homes going into that area with the three schools that are there, get a high school, middle school, and an elementary school. And they need to either enhance the traffic situation or create safety zones for the two-mile radius children that walk to school on Holiday Lake Drive. Not so many on Anclot Road, but mainly on Holiday Lake Drive. Traffic's gonna, you have twenty buses per school. Three schools has sixty buses one way and sixty buses coming out the other way for the total day. So plus you have foot traffic and you have parents that live in the subdivision that drop their kids off in the morning before they go to work. So traffic is the main, the main issue to this. You have, if you have an average of two vehicles per unit, you're talking a lot of vehicles. So that's the main concern.
All right.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello.
All right.
Don't be scared.
I am. I don't do it in front of people. I'm Tanya Malmstrom, two zero, two seven Essex Drive. And I agree with what George is saying, but also with the traffic coming from back. It takes you up to alternate nineteen and that's already backed up at least a couple of times a day, especially in the wintertime. So you can't even get out of the subdivision to turn left to continue out to US nineteen. And that's probably a good mile, maybe a mile and a quarter. And also, we were talking about flooding, because now they're going to be elevated, I think, what is it? Nine feet? So then the water is being dispersed out. Because I'm right by, within a half a mile of where they're going to be building. And I know they're going to do retention ponds, but how much do those hold? And they will sometimes overflow. And the other thing is, because we've got three, four beautiful parks back there at Anclot, it would be great to have that property be stay agriculture and maybe the county could buy it. Because as the motto says for Pasco is, "Open spaces, vibrant places." And we keep building and building right there and we're losing our open spaces. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Very well. Anyone else? You got your traffic man handy?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn this over to Steve to talk about the traffic in just a minute. But I just wanted to point out for our neighbors, because I was speaking to them before, that the area of the site that we're proposing to build on is all in flood zone X. There is an area over where the cell tower is in the wetland that's going over to the east that's in A. We're not proposing to build in that area. And obviously, we're going to apply with all the county and swift mud rules on that stuff. So I'm really not worried about flooding on what we're building there. But I think, really, I want to have Steve talk about the traffic.
Clark, before you turn it over to Steve, just by way of clarification, is that tower, a cell tower or is it a radio tower or both?
Is it a what?
The tower, is it?
It's a communication tower. It's not a cell tower.
It's the Channel Ten in Tampa.
Does it have cell service on it? Two or is it just?
They're saying yes. I don't know, David. I haven't looked at the panels on the tower. I don't know.
I was just curious if it was, if it was only a radio tower, less and less people are listening to the radio and it may come down at some point.
Right.
If it's got television and cell service, it's probably not coming down anytime soon.
Right. Yeah, I honestly do not know about that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you can't speak from the audience because we can't get it on.
If he knows the answer to my question, maybe we can bring him up.
Why don't you just come up and? Come up and speak in the microphone? Because if you say something wrong, then we can really come after you, see?
I didn't know you were the expert on towers.
It's recorded. Okay. It is a Channel Ten tower for, a Channel Ten in Tampa. Also a cell tower and also a radio tower for, I believe it's one oh four point seven.
Okay. You answered my question.
There's three different things, uses of it. And it's a very, very, very good lightning conductor. Lights up in the after, it lights up at night when there's lightning.
You always get a show.
Oh, my God. And you wonder.
And for the record, your name is?
George Megalutus.
You got that, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, George.
Good.
Thank you for the helpful information.
Thank you very much.
Lightning rock.
Good afternoon. Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, five oh two three West Laurel, Tampa, three three six oh seven. And I have been sworn. So just real quick on the traffic. One of the things we did on this one because of the schools, we actually did longer counts. So we did count from six AM to nine and then we also did them from one in the afternoon to six, just to make sure we've captured all the school hours in there. But we looked at that volume. We added a growth rate to it. In addition to that, we added the Dominion project to that. And when we looked at the analysis, you know, the driveway works at acceptable level of service. The volumes are reasonable out there to allow it to operate within, actually, it's level of service A or C for the different movements within the intersection.
So you did allow for the proposed Dominion project?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay. That was going to be my question.
Yes.
The proposed density is what I meant to say.
Do you have any questions, Richard, about the traffic thing?
No, I was going to mention though, that I doubt, I don't think there's twenty buses per school. I know at Gulfside, there's three. So I think that was a little bit overinflated, the twenty buses per school. A lot of the kids walk.
Richard, what is the capacity of these schools?
I was going to look, I was looking at the, so right now.
I've got the chart that was in here. If you give me just a second. They're all well below capacity.
Yeah.
Here, I've got it right here, Rich. Got to put my spectacles on here. With the proposed development, Gulfside would be at eighty-three percent. Paul R. Smith Middle would be at sixty-five percent. And Anclot would be at sixty-nine. So they're all well, well, under capacity. One thing I do want to do, and I was, again, speaking with George before the meeting, and he was a school bus driver for some years and he's concerned about the kids' safety. I am too. And I thought I would bring Rich over and we could talk. There's one area where there's a crossing from a multi-use path on the west side to a sidewalk on the east. And there's enough, my sense is enough school traffic there that we probably need some guards and stuff like that to make sure that the kids are softly, safely crossing there. So I want to get with Rich about that and talk about what we can do on it.
We can do that, yeah.
Real quick, Clark, what Richard had mentioned before about budding the football stadium there, what are your thoughts on that?
We wouldn't normally put a notice in about that, but we also don't mind doing it because David has a condition about roads that we have to give people notice about anyway. So I can work with David to try to put a notice in there that we would do on sale.
I mean, they'll have a really great view of the Friday night football games, but.
And soccer.
And soccer, yeah. So, okay.
Anyway, thanks. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So do we have a motion for the sake of conversation?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. One to eleven.
So, Mr. Chair, before Patrick starts, since this is one where you already had a workshop on it, would it be okay if we just asked Patrick to just talk about what he changed since the workshop?
That would be great.
That would be fantastic.
I know Patrick would like to. David, come on.
Patrick, he's your friend.
Listen, I'm trying to play pickleball later, so that's great with me.
You're too young for pickleball.
So if you could just focus on what?
Too young for pickleball. It is a growing sport among younger people.
It is, yeah.
So if you could just focus on what you changed after the workshop?
Sure, I can do that. So this presentation will be a little bit quick, I guess. So accessory dwelling units, I think, from the previous workshop, we talked about the importance, why we're doing them, all that type of stuff. We went through all the previous regulations that we were proposing. Some of the specific concerns I think the planning commission had at the time was in terms of areas in the county where accessory dwelling units may not be appropriate. Maybe there's problems with stormwater.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. He just wanted you to say your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, yeah. Patrick Dutter, Planning Development Economic Growth. Thank you. So there might be areas that aren't appropriate for accessory dwelling units. So you asked that we reached out to some other county departments to get some feedback. We reached out to the fire department, stormwater team, the building construction services team, utilities group. And we said, hey, we're bringing accessory dwelling units in front of the planning commission and the board. Are there any areas that you guys can think of specifically where you might not want to see accessory dwelling units? None of them were necessarily concerned about accessory dwelling units. They think the regulations we have on the books, I think, were sufficient. So those were some of the answers that we received. If you have any specific questions on those departments, I can maybe try and elaborate a little further.
I do. We just had a workshop on stormwater. And I get the answer to that question generally, but there are a few areas in our county that I think Commissioner Starkey called them anomalies. And I'll give you an example, Thousand Oaks. Okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear about this. So stormwater would be perfectly okay if we added accessory dwelling units in Thousand Oaks.
So I didn't give them specific neighborhood examples and say, think about this area. I asked the question generally. And then Stormwater also directed me to Building Construction Services to talk to some of the engineers we have in Building Construction Services who are responsible for permitting structures themselves. And their opinion was, you know, we have, the existing regulations we have in terms of floodproofing buildings and making sure buildings are.
I guess where I'm going with the question is, I get that our existing regulations might require the accessory dwelling unit to be sort of elevated in an area like Thousand Oaks. But my understanding is in Thousand Oaks, the streets flood, like so badly that in a storm that emergency vehicles cannot get to the residences. So it seems like if you approved an accessory dwelling unit in Thousand Oaks, it might, even if it was out of, even if the structure wasn't flooded.
Getting to it.
Getting to it would be difficult. So. I'm not saying Stormwater doesn't know what they're doing. I just, but it just, that answer doesn't make sense to me for Thousand Oaks.
Okay. If you would like, between now and the board, I can go back to specifically some stormwater folks and try and maybe, and maybe work with you to find some areas specifically that we may need to take a closer look.
So can I ask a question about that? Patrick, in one, I know I had brought that issue up during the first presentation and Patrick is professional enough to have followed up and called me back to discuss it with me and his findings. And I appreciate that. So there's different kinds of ADUs. There's the kind of ADU where we close in the garage or make a separate entrance into a house and maybe add a little kitchenette into the house or something. So we're not really adding stormwater in that case. And then there's the type of ADU where I'm building grandma's shack in the back, where I am adding to the stormwater. To your point, David, or I'm trying to understand, are you more concerned about the increase in the population or the increase of the stormwater runoff in the area?
Both. I mean, I guess, and I want to be clear, I'm not talking, probably ninety-five percent of the county, I'm not sure I have this concern.
We don't want to exacerbate a problem.
My concern is if we have known areas where, where during a significant storm event, we know it's flooding into homes, you know, like in the case of Thousand Oaks, my understanding is that.
Mill pond.
There, it got so bad that the streets were basically, the streets were completely covered with water. So it seems to me if you're adding impervious surface, you're going to maybe even make it worse. So that's part of the concern. But I guess my bigger concern is if somebody has a rescue situation in that area, say it's the grandma on the accessory dwelling unit, I don't, we're not going to be able to get to them unless we're, unless the sheriff is getting the boats out there and like, you know, doing the.
It's exacerbating an existing issue.
I understand you. So the question is.
I mean, and I want to be clear, I fully support accessory dwelling units. I think they are helpful to, I think we have a housing supply issue. I think we need to allow them. I'm just, I'm just a little shocked that Stormwater's answer. Now, admittedly, Patrick didn't phrase the question to them that way. But my question, my question, my, the real, I would like Stormwater to be able to tell me to my face and the board to their face why it's okay that we're adding additional units in Thousand Oaks. That's the, that's, that may be the most egregious example, but there may be others.
Sure, there's others.
On this side of the county, yeah.
I want to ask it more from the legal, practical side of it. I understand your point. I agree with your point. And that was one of my concerns early on about this. And I'm, like you, I'm in favor of this. How do we deal with that? So can we, do we, can the, can the county create lists of due to flooding concerns in this neighborhood, we're not, do, do they do this on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis?
Areas of special concern.
Or do they have, how, how would we create in the code restrictions in places that are known?
Yeah, I mean, this is why I was kind of hoping Stormwater's answer would have been something like, here's the five areas of the county where we know we have, I mean, in theory, we could map them and say, in these five areas of the county where we have known flooding issues, it would require special exception approval to get it. I mean, it's not saying that you can never have an ADU, but you would, you would, you'd have to go through a more public, maybe staff could put additional conditions. I don't know. I mean, I.
Could you be more general about the wording in the code to say in areas of special flood concern? That way, if there's any new areas that pop up.
Let me better ask the question. Is it some, so for instance, like the staff has a development manual and they can update their development manual without coming to the planning commission? They're not changing the code. Could that be like in a, in a staff-administered document where we have these restrictions? Or would we need, when we're dealing with this, would we need to have it codified where there would have to be public hearings and board votes and?
I mean, I do think that homeowners have need some level of predictability as to whether, I mean, there should be something in the code that says whether you do or do not get an ADU. I mean, when you're, or whether you have to go through some additional process to get your ADU. I don't, there are probably some things you could put in a development manual, but we don't, I don't know that we've historically used a development manual for that purpose. The development manuals tends to be more procedural.
Yeah, and I don't mean the development manual itself. I mean, something similar to that where you could have an ADU manual that, well, the board's determined or the board could pass a resolution perhaps that due to problems of access during times of flooding, we are not going to allow ADUs in this neighborhood or?
Yeah, but I guess there is probably a way that you could fashion the code to say, you know, except in those areas, it's allowed except in the areas, you know, similar like a drainage station of special concern, like where you adopt some by some subsequent resolution, the areas where you want some special treatment, whether it's special exception approval or something. Yes, that is possible to do. I mean.
You can refer to that table and you can have a separate table.
But I will tell you that, to me, what works better is kind of like what we do with wellhead protection, where, I mean, they're mapped. I mean, they're, they're, with our wellhead protection regulations, anybody who wants to, and we did have a recent application where we didn't map it properly. Okay, but putting that, putting that aside, landowners know that if they're in those areas, they, there's some, there's special regulations that apply that may prohibit them from doing certain things. And so I, my preference, I like predictability in your code. I'd prefer that we have somehow mapped these. I mean, if Stormwater comes back and says, it's perfectly fine for us to add ADUs in the, to Thousand Oaks and our board agrees, I guess that's the answer.
So, so if I may, maybe I can do a better job of asking those specific questions to Stormwater, right? I was, because I wasn't sure if it was fire, utilities, it was probably all of them that we had concern with, but it sounds like specifically we're honing in on Stormwater. So maybe I can get, hone in on that specifically.
I want to be clear, I don't, it may not be the only issue, but, but the reason I'm more focused on is because we're dealing with this issue as we speak. I mean, we have flooding that just occurred. We have homeowners that were trapped and or lost their homes. I'm sensitive to other issues like, you know, water pressure and things like that, but I, but I don't, I don't know if those warrant the same level of heightened scrutiny, it's great heightened scrutiny, in my opinion, as Stormwater, just because of the risk that Stormwater creates. But the planning commission may disagree with this.
Are you talking about ADUs that are only the ones that create impervious surfaces? Or for example, if you build an ADU on top of your garage, like we have in Long Island?
I mean, I'm, I guess I'm less concerned if it's, if it's not creating additional impervious surface. But I, but these AD regulations.
It does create more people to rescue.
It does, but.
And flood.
But I guess to me, the concern goes hand in hand. Because my, my guess is that most of these are not, they're going to create some additional impervious surface.
I guess what I'm asking, trying to ask it better, is there a language fix that can be added to the proposed ordinance that would allow the board from time to time to by resolution add certain neighborhoods to a map wherein ADUs can't be permitted because of some public health safety or welfare reasons?
Where they can only be by special exception.
There is, but to me, it should still be tied to some objective criteria. If we don't want to map it, I mean, maybe, you know, probably criteria where you say in areas where flooding has reached the level where it's gotten into people's home. I mean, there's probably a language you could come up with where even if it's not mapped, you could describe in words those areas of the county that there's been a serious flooding issue. And I don't, this is why it would be helpful to have Stormwater here, we could kind of fashion something. But, I mean, for example, I don't know if you all remember, but when we got rid of the as-built requirement out of our code, we, we didn't get rid of it for flood-prone areas. So somehow people were able to identify that as an area that needed special treatment where we were not going to get rid of the as-built requirement. Maybe that's the language we use. I have been met, that may be too broad for ADUs. I don't know. This is where I really need Stormwater's expertise, because they probably know better than, well, you all are engineers. You maybe know better than I do.
Doesn't mean we know every area in the county that floods, but.
I mean, if we wanted to come up with this language that, that were, there's some objective standard that says if it's, if the flooding has reached a certain level in this area, that.
Yeah, the danger, David, is it's not only necessarily from what I'm hearing, and I agree with you, but like Thousand Oaks, it's not really necessary, it may not be only those houses that flood, because they may have problems getting there, people getting, able to get rescued from there. So it's hard to say and tie it to a specific house. It would be some, somehow some area.
Something I want to just add to, and again, I completely agree with what you're saying. But I, I always equate accessory dwelling units to an extent to someone adding an addition onto their existing home or something like that. We don't have a requirement for people that are adding a bedroom addition onto a home in Thousand Oaks to come through and get a special exception. But we would do that if it were an accessory dwelling unit, so.
Well, my argument would be that when you get to an accessory dwelling, it's adding the potential for additional humans.
Well, so it was an additional room, you got a baby that just.
Patrick, following up your comment, when, when we had the workshop, someone wouldn't need a special exception to build, as Chairman Gray discussed, an ADU over the garage or an ADU where we close off one section of the house and provide a separate entrance. But one would need a special exception when we were going to exceed, if the ADU was going to encroach over a setback line or exceed the lot coverage required, lot coverage max in the zoning district. Those things were going to require special, so is, in this version, are they all requiring SEs now?
What do you mean, are they all?
Meaning, are all, do all ADUs in this version of the ordinance require a special exception? Or do we have some that so long as they fit within the zoning parameters, they don't need a special?
Most are actually don't. I think, tell me if I'm wrong, Patrick, most of them are not going to require a special exception.
Yeah, the vast majority would not. It's only if you are attempting to go into your setback, would you need a special exception? If you are attempting to go over your lot coverage, you would need a special exception. Basically, those development standards would trigger.
Now, you're making my point for me. To me, if you're building an ADU in a place like Thousand Oaks, that may be more egregious than intruding into a setback. I mean, shouldn't that require a special exception too?
Again, potentially, that's to your discretion, I think, as the planning commission.
What I'm thinking is that, really, the crux of it should be, is it going to increase the footprint on your lot? Or, because if you build it on top of your garage, it's not going to increase the footprint.
Or, because if you build it on top of your garage, it's not gonna increase the footprint on your, on your lot. Or if you cha- change a room into a child's room instead of the garage. That's not gonna increase the footprint. But if you add to the, add to the building or build a bedroom onto the building and, and now it's a. Three thousand square foot home instead of twenty-five hundred. So, well, that's an interesting, interesting conundrum. Because, and I'm sorry if the people in Thousand Oaks are listening, I don't mean to be picking on you. So.
They may be the first ones to get up and say that we don't want more people to be building stuff in Thousand Oaks.
If we went that route, what I'm going, where I'm going is that if someone wanted to build an ADU. They would. Then we'd be come in here and we'd say, well, you're increasing the amount of stormwater runoff, therefore. We wanna put this restriction, or we wanna deny your ability to have the ADU. But if someone next door to them came in and said, well, I just wanna add another ten feet to my living room. Which wasn't an ADU, then we wouldn't look at the stormwater impact.
And that's my point.
Yeah, but, I mean, but. The theory of an ADU is it's creating additional living unit. I mean, in theory, it's gonna have the additional kitchen, the additional, I mean. It's, it's in theory set up so that somebody could independently live in that unit. I, I do think it is different than adding ten feet to your living room. You're adding more population to the area with an ADU, in my opinion. Now, it, like I said, in ninety-five percent of the cases, I don't think this is a problem. And I haven't said a lot, even if it was on a dirt road, I don't know that I care, because that's, I don't know that that's a health safety issue.
So let's, let me ask this question. Has staff got any, you know, scientific wild guesstimate as to? The number of ADU applications they think they might receive in a year?
Uh, so I do have a wildly random. I think we talked about it last time. We actually reached out to a lot of surrounding counties and asked, you know, the frequency of how often they were getting ADUs submitted, and I think it's actually. Kinda, kinda in a slide here. Um, so Hillsborough County, they said between a hundred and fifty and two hundred. Penalos County said a hundred. Polk County said fifty. Sumter said not really a, a big amount. Um, so those are the numbers our neighbors were looking at generally. Um, so I would think maybe for the first year or so, we might see. Around those numbers, maybe more. I, I just, I don't know, but I don't think it's in the thousands.
And part of the reason I'm particularly concerned about Stormwater is it's a hidden issue. I mean, you talk to these residents in Thousand Oaks, they all bought their homes thinking they had a. That they never had any, you know, that they, they were buying into paradise. Okay, and so. You know.
They were, it's just wet.
I'm just saying, if you buy a home on a dirt road or where it's got cell tower next to it, you, you're buying knowing that, what you're getting into. Or you move into an ADU in one of those areas, you know what you're getting into. You don't, you don't really know that with flooding and Stormwater.
So.
So I'm not sure that the people.
Following the thought, the reason that I asked the question is perhaps the way. And I personally would feel better about the ADU ordinance to start. I don't feel like, I think this is a good idea. This is something I'm personally willing to support, but I think. Inevitably, anytime we try something new, there's, there's gonna be some successes, and then there's gonna be some not so good results. And we'll come back and tweak this thing. And what I'm wondering is maybe to start, should they just all be special exceptions so we can look at them on a case by case basis? But now the problem is, we don't wanna overwhelm the planning commission with a thousand ADU applications, and we would never go home on every other.
But if there's a hundred to a hundred and fifty in existence in all of Hillsborough County with the population that they have.
I'm sorry, non-existence, just how many were submitted over the last year.
Over the last year. Oh, okay.
Application.
Yeah, I, I. Ten months.
The reason I'm, the reason I'm a little. A, I'm concerned about overwhelming the planning commission, but. B, I don't know that this is a concern in at least eighty percent of the county.
Sure.
And so, why are you gonna make somebody who.
Right, I agree with that.
Perfectly high and dry area. Go through the planning commission and have Mr. Moody yell at them. Even though they have, you know, there's no issues with flooding in their area. I mean, I, I, but, I was hoping Stormwater would come back and say, here's the five areas of the county that. We have known flooding where we, yes, we'd have some concerns with. Additional impervious surface, additional residents locating into this area. I'm a little surprised they came back and said, it, the whole county's fine. I'm, I'm a little surprised that they said that.
David, can't you, couldn't you just add some kinda language?
Thinking someone's gonna come refute this, David.
Hi, I'm Larry Adkada. I'm the, uh, operations manager for Public Works. Uh, currently right now. Now, as far as the flooding areas, yes, there are concerns of, of flooding. I personally didn't review this, cause it's not my area for reviewing. I am the, I just, I work on the aftermath of most of the stuff that gets put out there. So, um, however, um, understanding what you guys are talking about here. So, when it comes to your concern, let's say, um, Thousand Oaks is what you're saying. From my understanding, as being on the ground out there, Thousand Oaks flooded the streets. There wasn't a single home that, under my understanding, that actually got water in them. So when you're, when you're talking about terminology as far as how to, uh, put this in some kind of regulation. As far as flooding is concerned, we gotta be careful, um, because you're saying if, if your house gets flooded at, you know, X amount of feet. Or how much water got into your home, it can cause a problem. However, there wasn't a single home that I'm aware of in Thousand Oaks that actually had water in it. Now, cause the homes are built at a higher level, but the roads are not, and that's, that's part of the problem out there in Thousand Oaks as far as flooding. So getting emergency vehicles and stuff out there.
Let me ask you a question, though. So, good point, but do you think adding additional impervious surface to Thousand Oaks? Might actually cause flooding to get into homes?
Now, when you're saying adding additional impervious, uh. I don't think that when you're looking at areas like, uh, that are governed by HOAs and, and, uh, CDDs. That they would allow those, uh, additional, um, in this case. Dwellings to be built, uh, just from that aspect.
Okay, well, I gotta stop you there, because we don't, this is a zoning regulation. We, we have no way of knowing whether.
Right.
HOAs or CDDs are more restrictive, I mean.
Understand.
We can't, we can't develop a regulation based on that assumption.
And then I'm gonna go back to, to the whole flooding, you know, issue. Uh, as you mentioned, that you wouldn't be concerned if, uh, if a dirt road would, uh, you know, cause you live out in the rural area. Well, I can tell you that most of these dirt private roads that, that are out there, there are a lot out in like the Suffer Hills out there in the rural areas that are flooded still. Um, that folks can't move back and forth through their homes because of the, their.
Yeah, I wanna be clear, I, when I said I was okay with a dirt road, if it was a high and dry dirt road, I don't think that's a problem. If it's an area that where it's flooding, that may be a problem. So I guess.
I think he meant is you can see what a dirt road is, or so you can't see potential flooding. You, you can see a cell phone tower, but you can't see potential flooding. It's a hidden.
Yeah, understood, and.
Is what he's.
I guess I, I was just, I'm surprised that your department answered Patrick's question with. We're perfectly okay with the entire county having ADUs. I'm just, that, if, if the answer is because you really are and you have a good explanation, I guess I'll live with it. I, but that's why I gave Thousand Oaks as the example. There may be more egregious examples, but. If you're telling me that you're perfectly okay with additional ADUs adding, being added to Thousand Oaks, I'll accept that answer.
I don't, I don't believe that we would be saying that the whole county is a, is, is a candidate for adding ADUs now. That, we don't have that authority to say, yes, we're good with this and no, we're not good with this as far as. Stormwater is concerned, cause like you said, it's a hidden, it's a hidden issue. As we can all, as we all saw over the last year. I mean, there's areas that, that flooded in this, in, in the county that never flooded in, you know, over a hundred and some odd years, so. We have to, we have to take into account that there's.
I don't think he's talking about extreme events.
Thousand Oaks, yeah, Thousand Oaks.
Thousand Oaks is a known flood problem. We can get two or three days of rain in summertime, and Thousand Oaks's streets are gonna be flooded. And to your point about.
And there are areas in the county that we, that we are aware of.
HOAs and CDDs. I can think of Holiday Hill in Port Ritchie that floods and is a constant stormwater problem, and they don't have any HOA or CDD that would get in the way of. Them having ADUs over there, so.
That's if they can find a place to build an ADU out there.
So, I realize that you're not setting policy. I'm not asking you to set policy. I'm asking you, is there a way to? Cause I think Patrick asked the question because we were hoping that you could identify those areas of the county that are like Thousand Oaks. Not an extreme flooding, you know, you know, extreme hurricane event where, you know, one is just a thousand years type of thing. But you can area like Thousand Oaks, it routinely floods in a heavy rain. So I would thought that Stormwater would just know where those areas were. And could identify them for Patrick, so we could either verbally describe them or map them, or do something so that we could.
Well, we can. That's definitely, that, that's definitely.
How often, there, the county has an observed flooding layer.
Yeah, I was wondering if they can put that up on the map.
On Pasco mapper, right?
And basin of special concern.
Right, and the base, how of, how often is the observed flooding map updated?
I would, I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, sir.
I mean, under the observed flooding on Pasco mapper, there's only two boxes. It's El Nino of ninety-eight and flood of two thousand and three.
Yeah, I don't think any of like last year's stuff's in there.
They haven't been there since Cindy Jolly put the maps together.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
When you, when you click on observed flooding, there's nothing that pops up in Thousand Oaks.
Yeah, I would, I would, I wouldn't throw it past them that they would be updating these maps, especially after last year, so. How long that takes, I can't tell you.
Click on the, if you click on the arrow next to observed flooding, you can see the.
This is where I think it would be a good, I mean, this sort of following up on Mr. Moody's suggestion.
Those are the only two.
If it was, if we had a, a map that sort of was routinely updated. It would sort of be self amending to your point, that, that every time we updated that map, it would become now.
And then we could restrict them in those areas.
It would suddenly become a area where you need a special exception to get, to get that, if, if, if you were on that mapped area.
Yeah, you don't wanna carte blanche deny it, but make it a special exception if it's in that area.
That's what I, that's what ultimately we were looking for, I think we were looking for. Is, is there some map? That we could refer to and say, if you're in one of these mapped areas. We need to take a little higher look at whether an ADU should be allowed there.
There, there are maps that can be provided, yes, sir. Uh, and based off our current knowledge of what areas flood in, in Pasco County. There, there are maps that we can create and provide to the planning department, uh, to, you know, to have those available for them.
And, and as an, as an aside, it would be very helpful to include that onto our Pasco mapper under the observed flooding part. Just for the future.
Yes, I would, I would definitely agree to that.
Okay, well, that's helpful.
That's helpful.
So. Patrick, I, how difficult would it be? I, I realize you need to get this to the board, so. Is this something you think you could accomplish between now and the time this gets to the board? You had some. Language that refers to some map and says if it's, if you're in these mapped areas, you need a special exception to get an ADU?
I hope so. Uh, don't know what the map looks like and who has it, and I, hopefully him. So, uh, hopefully we can get a, a hand.
Strong maybe.
An understanding of what that map is, um, you know, if it's taken up half the county, I don't know if that was the direct result. If it's, like, covers a small portion of what's flooded recently, I think it's reasonable. But.
The language in theory, it's very simple language. You just refer to the maps, yeah.
We just, we just need to get the maps. The language isn't gonna be a big deal, so, um, assuming that all works out fine.
So are there any other? Are there any language changes since the time of the workshop?
A few things. Um, I think, Mr. Moody, you brought up last time about concern about potential condominiums. We added language specifically to avoid condominiums.
Good.
Um, I think, let me see. I don't think anything drastic changed since the last time, other than that.
You got rid of the architectural.
The.
Department.
The, oh.
You said you were getting rid of that.
Right, um, cause we, any architectural stuff is gonna be handled by the MPUD if the MPUD handles architectural design standards, so we're not getting involved in the architectural stuff.
Okay.
We removed, um, some language about mobility fee stuff. Uh, that was really just an FYI stuff, and I. They can handle that through the mobility fee tables, so there's no reason to put it in the code.
Mobility fees will be charged.
They will be charged with the mobility, with the ADU rate in the mobility, mobility fee table, so yes, they will be charged. Some other things we didn't necessarily talk about last time, um, but we are changing with this. They're generally very minor things. Where we need to specifically permit ADUs in all of the zoning, the residential zoning districts, so we added that language in all of the, uh, zoning districts. That allow single family homes. Um, we are also, there are some still holdout, uh, zoning districts that didn't combine. Accessory coverage and primary coverage. Um, a lot of, most of our zoning districts had in time been changed to combine them. Um, we're just, I think there's two left that we didn't do, we're combining them, so now the coverage is the same for, for both the principal and the accessories or additional accessory structure.
Patrick, since you're, um, amending the zoning districts to allow them as a permitted use. How are you dealing with the MPUDs that, there are some MPUDs that were expressly allows ADUs. What about the MPUDs that didn't expressly allow the ADUs? Are they gonna be allowed to do them now?
If, if they are silenced, uh, our language, yes, would allow ADUs.
Okay.
Let's see, added the appendix definition of an ADU, that's not a big deal. And we changed some language about the, uh, caretaker for, uh, industrial areas. That's primarily it. There's nothing else major, I think, changed in the language between from what we talked about last time at the planning commission and the, what you have in front of you. Although, again, we, we talked about a few things, so if you think of anything specific that maybe I didn't cover, I can try and address anything.
I have a question. I wasn't here, but what, uh, properties west of nineteen that in the, uh. Flood evacuation area, are those, yes, ADU or no ADU?
We'll see, based on this map.
Okay.
That was, that was the crux of the discussion we just had, basically, is.
Okay, I was just more specific with nineteen.
I think, well, I think where we're going with it, just what I'm hearing is. If it's on whatever map that gets created by Stormwater, that it wouldn't necessarily be prohibited, but it would require a special exception approval to get an ADU.
So, David, let me ask this question. What about things like hurricane evacuation zones? Like, for instance, should they be restricted in, say, evacuation zone A?
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, my, so. But you're saying, but you could be in hurricane evacuation air zone and necessarily be on the flood maps that he's gonna come up with, so. Are you, is the concern about just evacuation, like your ability that we're adding.
Right, yes.
Population to an area that may need to evacuate?
Right, that's the highest level evacuation zone.
I'll give you my personal opinion. We've approved a number of rezonings. In hurricane evacuation zones where we're adding density to those areas. The theory is they do pay this hurricane mitigation fee to help create shelter capacity.
Had that discussion.
And they do pay an additional fee to help with the cost of hurricane evacuation routes. But we, you know, we have not, I guess my point is if we're willing to allow an MPUD or. Including rezoning to add density to hurricane evacuation area, and it's not a known flood area. I'm not sure why we necessarily need to restrict ADUs in those areas. I don't think they're, I don't think the ADU is any worse than what we've already allowed, is my point.
And I'm good. I think there should be some guidance given to. The poor gentleman in the back that's gonna have to go back and talk to his people about a map. That we're not talking about. Storm surge flooding from a hurricane. We're talking about routine. Pesky drainage neighborhoods. The, these are the ones that flood when we get, you know, two inches of rain and an afternoon thunderstorm. Not the ones that flood because we got.
A hundred year storm.
A hundred year hurricane. I agree with you. I, I, that was not my, my, I recognize that, yes, there could be somebody at risk when you get to a hundred year hurricane, but. We hadn't had a hurricane hit us in what, how many years before it? It's been a long time, so, but a place like Thousand Oaks, a place like Thousand Oaks, as you said, it's, it's, it's flooding even when we don't have hurricanes. So that's my, those are the areas I'm concerned about.
I just wanna make sure that when, if they try to develop a map, then that's why I asked the question, that they don't all of a sudden come in and say, okay, everything west of nineteen can't have an ADU, or.
Right.
That wasn't what I was. That wasn't what I was.
Right.
My concern was, I mean, you all may have that concern. That wasn't mine. I, I don't know that we should necessarily prohibit these ADUs based on a once every hundred-year hurricane event.
I would agree with you. These are the ones, the regular run-of-the-mill.
I'm fairly confident that Thousand Oaks is.
We can't design, we can't design for 40 days and 40 nights.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to add on one thing. What, so if, going through that western 19 flood zone area, if you were allowed to ADU, would it need to be elevated? Because does a new home need to be elevated in the flood zone? Because then, and then you'd have a 1970s home that's on grade and you'd have an ADU that's 12 feet up. Just a question, you know, to think about.
Whatever our flood regulations are when they're building a new structure.
Fortunately, the Florida building code does, gives you no leeway.
Right.
You are going up in the air, yes.
And just to think about that with compatibility and how that would look. Just, just putting it out there.
Houses built on grade and then you have
Yeah.
The 900 square foot structure up in the air.
Right.
But if you ask, if you ask FEMA, they're going to, if you ask FEMA, they're going to say at least that ADU is not at risk.
Yeah, yeah. And you've got trailers out up on I-beams.
And they'll say it's a place for the people in the house to evacuate to. Just go to the ADU.
Patrick, where did we land on, on density calculations as far as an ADU? My, my example is if somebody builds an ADU, is that all of a sudden two dwelling units?
No, they're exempt from the comprehensive plan requirements or the comprehensive plan density requirements or restrictions. So an accessory dwelling unit is not counting towards or against density.
Accessory dwelling unit is not a dwelling unit.
It's, it's a dwelling unit, but it's not.
By virtue of the comp plan amendment that staff processed, it's not being counted for purposes of comp plan and zoning density.
Okay, so we already took care of that in the comp plan amendment.
Right. We're not going to deny an ADU because it exceeds the density of the zoning or the comp plan, right? Is that the answer?
Only one ADU per parcel?
That's correct.
Okay.
An ADU is an ADU, not a DU. It's, it's a different.
Yeah, I was just, I was, I was reading all the zoning categories. I saw those densities and I'm like, wait a second.
It's its own definition.
It's accessory to another primary
Correct.
Structure. But it is, it is functioning as an independent living unit. Like, it's going to have, Patrick can put up the condition, the definition, but it's got its own kitchen and it's, it's not just a bedroom, just to work clear. It's, it's an independent unit that somebody can live in and never have to go to the main primary structure.
But for purposes of density, it's, it's got a different definition than a normal dwelling unit.
The issue that we have, and we talked about this last time, is that if it counted towards density, you're going to start seeing, to legitimize these, you're going to see a bunch of rezonings and comp plan amendments just to get
Right.
ADUs, which is what we were trying to avoid.
Right.
Those are even more egregious than a special exception.
Yeah.
I think we had a case recently where we basically were doing a comp plan amendment and taking something out of the rural area just to add a single dwelling.
Yeah, one unit, yeah.
I don't know if you all remember that.
Any other questions?
This is a public hearing, so I don't know if any of these folks want to speak to it.
Okay, if there are no other questions, if, Patrick, then for anybody who's still here with us, does anybody like to comment or have, have any questions? I take that as a no.
I'll move approval.
Was that with the recommended, is that with the recommended change to deal with the stormwater situation?
Yes.
I'll second.
To clarify.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Patrick.
Turn left? Or should we give a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.